Meeting will come to order, please. Good evening. Thank everybody for getting here early. Much appreciated. The -- been present. We have just a couple of announcements. Excuse me, really quickly. First, as the Parking Task Force has asked me to make the following announcement. The Parking Task Force would like to remind you that it has sent surveys out with the tax bills concerning parking at the ocean beaches and that the same survey is available on the page. We are getting many responses but want to make sure that all who wish to participate have a chance to do so. This survey will close on May 28th. With this information and some other surveys to: one, commercial interests; two, to the Marina users; and three, to the non-taxpaying beach permit holders; and observations made over the busy summer season, the Task Force will be making observations and recommendations to help with pressures on parking in the summers. So please get your survey response in, and if you can, please use the online survey. And that's thank you from the Parking Task Force. Also Suzanne Groucho Thomas from the Beach Program has wanted me to let you know that there are these newly printed brochures. Suzanne, are there some of them out on the table out there entitled "Be Shark Smart"? She wanted to call your attention to those. One other announcement. Wellfleetians' favorite Saturday is Amnesty Day coming up this coming Saturday, April 27th, at the Town Disposal Area. The hours for that are from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. I just wanted to -- last night we talked about some retirements. Kind of late-breaking news here. I'm sorry to say, for our sake, but I'd like to make the announcement, our town clerk, Joseph Powers, is going to be leaving. He's going to become Harwich's Town Administrator. And I have to say -- I'm sorry, Assistant Town Administrator. I have to say that Harwich's gain is certainly our loss. Thank you for all the work you've done here, Joe. It's been a pleasure to work with you. And one other, I omitted one very significant name last night, and I apologize for that. Ms. Norma Simon in our in memoriam. Norma Simon served the town on both the Wellfleet Elementary School Committee and the Nauset Regional School Committee. So could I ask that we have a moment of silence in Norma's memory, please? Thank you very much. I apologize for omitting that last night. This time formally call the meeting to order. The quorum once again is 2874. I'm sorry, the number of registered voters is 2874. Our quorum is 173. I've been informed by the town clerk that we have a quorum present. Couple of other procedural notes. I do expect that we'll be able to finish work on all of the warrant articles tonight. I'm going to ask that the speakers limit themselves to try to be as concise as possible and not to repeat a point if it's already been made. If you have something new to add, obviously, we'll be recognized for that purpose. Once again, I'll be limiting speakers to three minutes apiece. And as I did last night, I'd ask that you hold your applause, and if you feel so moved at the end of the article after the vote's been taken. But I'd prefer that we not offer any applause after individual speakers. I think it helps move things along. Also, once again, if we do need to go to a third night, which I'm hoping we don't have to, the school will be available tomorrow evening, but ideally, we won't need to do that. Again, I'm hoping that we can conclude by about 10:00 p.m., but if we're close to finishing the warrant, I'm going to suggest that we stay to conclude our business. Once again, just a reminder, any amendments have to be given to me and the town clerk in writing under our bylaws. Any exceptions will be at my discretion. Again, please keep track of the voter card that you were given at the beginning when you checked in. If we have to take a standing count on any warrant article, the tellers are instructed to count voter cards. And we'll also be using the number on the back of your card for the beach drawing sticker at the end of the evening, once we conclude our business. Again, I'd ask that you put your cellphones on either airplane mode or vibrate, keep them quiet. And if you plan to speak and debate, it would help if you can try to be ready at one of the microphones. I already told you about the bee sticker drawing. We'll do that at the end of the meeting. Ready to move on now. Last night, we concluded with Article 27. We'll begin tonight with Article 28. May I have a motion, please, Ms. Plowey?
I move that the town vote to set aside from the Community Preservation Fund estimated annual revenues, the sums that are printed in your motions booklet.
Is there a second?
That saves the reading.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that the town vote to set aside from the Community Preservation Fund estimated annual revenues, the sums printed in your motion booklet. We're going to try to do this with these articles. I've talked to town council again. Oh, I'm sorry, I neglected to introduce Carolyn Murray. Forgive me. Carolyn Murray from the Firm of Copelman Page is here as our town council tonight. I talked to Ms. Murray, and she said that, given that everyone has the motions booklet, that it's okay to go ahead and make the motions as printed in the booklet. So, Ms. Plowey?
As many of you know, the Community Preservation Act allows for an appropriation of 3% of our tax dollars to go toward historic preservation, open space, housing, and recreation. Any person in town or group can come to CPC, fill out an application. There are nine members of the Community Preservation Committee who will review the request, and anything that they consider worthy of town meeting's attention will be put on the warrant for your approval, as the next five articles are for this year.
Further debate on the motion? Seeing none, the article requires -- the motion, rather, requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries on a unanimous voice vote. Article 29, may I have a motion, please? Mr. Sorkin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move funding for an affordable housing specialist as printed in the motion booklet.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve funding for an affordable housing specialist as printed in the motions booklet. Debate on the motion, Mr. Sorkin.
I went home last night after the discussion about young oyster men and women, and if my understanding is correct, in order to be a commercial oyster fisherman in Wellfleet, you have to live in the town. So I was thinking, how many of those young people are still dreaming about getting out of their parents' basement and finding a place to live in Wellfleet? You know, a generation ago, the average town employee or the EMT that we are desperately trying to hold on to, or an oyster man, could afford the average apartment or house in town. But that hasn't been true for some period of time. And if you ask, what do we do in community housing? It's really this is our major task, is how do we help to keep our young families and working people in Wellfleet? And that is our job, one, that we're trying to do, and you'll see in the articles tonight about that. Is there another slide that has a chart? Ah! So take a minute and look at this. Some of you in the back may not make it out, but this is a chart of the affordable housing that each town in the lower and outer Cape, all of our neighbors, have achieved according to the state measurement. And you'll see, Province Town is on the top, and on the bottom is Wellfleet. Now, we do have some units through our AADU program that don't meet either the affordability or the permanency required by the state that would increase our numbers somewhat. But the reality is, we would still not be doing an A-plus job on this. And the other reality is, our neighbors to either side, Eastham and Truro, have really big projects that they're now moving forward with. So relatively, we're actually moving down rather than moving up on the chart. But it's not all bad news, because what this says is that towns around us that face the same problems that we do, about high property taxes and a really strong second housing market, and the lack of buildable land, especially town-owned land, are still making great strides. And we can too, if we commit the resources to do it and the will to do it. So one thing that all of these towns have that we don't? Two things, really. Every town on this list, except for Wellfleet, has a full-time planner. Every town on this list, except for Wellfleet, but one, has a housing specialist that is dedicated to developing housing solutions. So Article 29 is a fairly straightforward article. It says, "Let us hire a specialist to help us with the problem." The reality is today is that building community housing is an incredibly complex task. The number of laws that you have to know about is immense. We recently did a small funding proposal, and it was incredibly arcane and complex. And the mechanisms are fierce, and they're expensive, and we're competing with other towns for that. And we also have to work with all the state and local officials, as well as developers, large and small. So if we can bring this kind of resource to Wellfleet, we will help with all of the tasks we have related to building community housing. So I wanted to just straight let you know, those of you who may be concerned about this, we are not creating a permanent position in the town, number one. And number two is, we honestly don't know what the price will be. What we hope to find is the right person at the right price with the right skills. But we're optimistic that this will give us funding for about a year and a half or so for this part-time housing specialist. I think it will be a tremendous addition to our efforts to build community housing, and I ask for your support for Article 29. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sorkin. Further debate, Mr. Wolf.
Yes, this is an excellent proposition. I've been made aware of situations in which those who are providing affordable accessory dwelling units are having trouble navigating the things they have to do in order to get their property tax rebates, for instance. And this is one of the incentives that make people want to go to the trouble of providing affordable housing units for rent. And anything that can be done to streamline that process and guarantee that these people will get what's coming to them will be all to the good. And if this hire, I've been given to understand, would enable the Housing Authority to actually take over administering this aspect of the program, which would end a lot of confusion that currently exists, and provide a mechanism for people that are renting these units out to get answers to questions. So if this actually does work out to our benefit, it might not be a bad idea to even consider this down the road as a permanent position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Further debate? Yes, Ms. Wilson.
Amplified, yes. So one of the most important things is monitoring our archive of or reservoir of affordable housing and making sure it's kept up to date. The Affordable Accessory Bylaw provides a certain small number, but substantial in terms of the lives of the people who live in them. And is the administration of that program also something that the specialist could do? In other words, make sure that their income is, you know, appropriate and keep track of those houses through you, Mr. Moderator, to Gary.
Yes, Mr. Sorkin.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moderator. Let me clarify that AADU, which stands for Accessory Affordable Dwelling Unit, is actually a program of the town and not the Housing Authority, and is administered by the town currently. So any issues really relate to the town and not to the Housing Authority. If it, in the future, if we determine that we have the personnel and you want to move it to the Housing Authority, that's certainly something we can take a look at.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Wilson?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Bacon?
This particular, there's going to be several articles with regard to housing. I think you all in the audience know how critical the need is for housing in Wellfleet, and how far behind we are in putting community housing into the community. This article is asking for consultant help, which will enable the Housing Authority, who's a board of volunteers, to have some legal and professional expertise guide them through that process. This is not easy. It's very complicated. You have to do a request for proposal, do more feasibility studies, do designing stuff. So urging you all to support these articles that will support housing in the town of Wellfleet. Thank you.
Are you ready for the question? There's no further debate. The motion before you is the motion made by Mr. Sorkin, that the funding for affordable housing specialist for the purpose of promoting, as printed in the, promoting housing as printed in your motions booklet, requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a unanimous voice vote. Article 30, may I have a motion, please, Ms. McElroy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that Article 30, Building the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, be approved with the amounts listed in the motion. Is that what we're saying?
That'll work, yes. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that Article 30, Building the Wellfleet Affordable Housing Trust Fund, be accepted and adopted as printed in your warrant. I'm sorry, as printed in your motions booklet. Debate on the motion, Ms. McElroy.
Thank you. This article is asking for the transfer of $100,000 in community preservation funds to the Wellfleet Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And that is one of the things the Community Preservation Act allows. In fact, housing is the only one of the four bodies that can get CPA funds that allows money to be used for the support of affordable housing. You can't use it for support of recreation, open space, or historic preservation, but you can use it for the support of housing. And this is really the most significant funding we have available to us in order to create housing programs and housing itself. And in the past, we've used our trust funds to support the purchase of five existing homes under our buy-down program. We used it to help meet gap funding on the six new apartments at Gol Pond Road. We used it to help carry out the resale of one of the affordable homes on Oyster Lane. And as Mr. Sorkin was talking about the expense, it cost almost $10,000 to carry out the resale of an affordable home. And we can also use these funds to leverage state and federal money. So I really do hope you will support this article, that will provide, as Ms. Bacon said, invaluable help to meeting our housing needs in town.
Thank you, Ms. McElroy. Further debate? Seeing none, the motion before you is the motion made by Ms. McElroy under Article 30. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a unanimous voice vote. Article 31, may I have a motion, please, Ms. Rogers?
I move that Article 31, the Cape Community Housing Partnership Housing Institute, be accepted and adopted as printed in the motions booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded at Article 31, the Cape Community Housing Partnership Housing, Cape Cod, I'm sorry, the Cape Community Housing Partnership Housing Institute, be accepted and adopted as printed in the motions booklet. Debate on the motion, Ms. McElroy.
I'd just like to urge you to support this article. The Community Development Partnership is really stepping up their attention to housing and helping and educating our town boards, our committees, our citizens about some of the intricacies. And they're bringing, there are a lot of great workshops you can go to in Boston or Framingham, and they all happen at 9:00 in the morning. And made a few of them. But the CDP is bringing these people to the Cape to benefit all of us, so I hope you will support this article.
Thank you, Ms. McElroy. Debate on the motion, Mr. Wolf.
Just a question for Ms. McElroy through the moderator. What exactly would this do in terms of addressing some of the confusion I mentioned earlier regarding the administration of the Affordable Housing Program as regards landlords who are renting out affordable housing? Because this is a problem that really needs to be addressed.
Can you answer that, Ms. McElroy?
I mean, the CDP is a great resource. There are someone we can go to to get help and guidance. We're committed to straightening out this problem in town. We know it's an important program for the town. This housing institute that this money is for is more a series of programs, educational programs. So it wouldn't apply directly to this, but they are a resource that we depend on. I know they're aware of the issue, and so we're going to put our heads together to get that one figured out.
Thank you. Did that answer the question, Mr. Wolf? Thank you, Ms. McElroy. Further debate, questions?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Ms. Lowenstein.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the Cape Housing Institute is, it's essentially an introductory training program for town officials and various, certain members of specific committees on how affordable housing is created. I took it this past fall. It was six weeks. It was intensive. It was very interesting. And anybody who's eligible to take it, there's no additional tuition. This essentially covers tuition for any member of a town, any eligible member of the town who'd like to take the training program. So I encourage it. It was eye-opening.
Thank you, Ms. Lowenstein. Further debate? Seeing none, the motion before you is the motion made by Ms. Rogers under Article 31, that Article 31 be accepted as printed in your motions booklet. Those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a unanimous voice vote. Article 32, may I have a motion? Is it Ms. Fowler?
It is. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that Article 32, Baker's Field Shade Pavilion, be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant, and that the sum of $60,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund fiscal year 2020, estimated revenues for the purposes of preserving and rehabilitating land for recreational use at Baker's Field by constructing and installing a permanent shade pavilion. The recreation--
Is there a second?
Sorry.
It's been moved and seconded that the Article 32 Baker's Field Shade Pavilion be accepted and adopted as printed in your warrant booklet. I'm sorry to cut you off, Ms. Fowler.
No worries, thank you. The Recreation Department's goal is to eliminate the ongoing rental cost of a temporary tent used each year for only two months in the summer, with instead an enhanced permanent pavilion with the useful life of up to 20 years, measuring 30 by 40 feet, in order to create a community space for all of us to use. Creating this flexible space would allow us to have enhanced programming for special events, civil engagement, cultural or musical events, interpretive learning, as well as other uses for various recreational activities at Baker's Field.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Further debate on the motion, Ms. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This traditional wooden pavilion will use the same footprint as the currently utilized 30 by 40-foot vinyl tent, but will be a huge upgrade as both a shade structure and venue for concerts and events. This model was selected for durability, aesthetics, and ability to withstand the harsh Cape environment. This project will round out the recent upgrades at Baker's Field as represented so nicely by the drone-shot photo on the cover of this year's annual report.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Rosenberg. Further debate?
Hi.
It's Ahern.
Judah Ahern. I just have a couple of questions. Did you consider the cement holes that we're going to have to dig there and provide a level surface for? Because I know there were problems with the pickleball court and other things. And also, I think we had two shade structures in the last few years, and I wondered if we were keeping them or if they were going to be replaced.
Is there somebody, Ms. Rosenberg, would you like to answer the question, please?
Yep. Okay. This engineered pavilion has been approved by the Wellfleet Conservation Commission with a stamp plan submitted by Coastal Engineering of Cape Cod. So we got clearance for the footings, and there is not going to be a concrete floor in this structure. So it passed the Conservation Commission approval unanimously. The shade structures, for the past five years, the town's been renting a tent. We had owned a tent previously. Are you talking about, that was our main, our main shade structure has been the 30 by 40-foot tent. If you're referring to the coverings of the picnic tables that were recently installed as part of the playground project, those will remain in place, but those can only be utilized by four to six people at a time, whereas the tent provides shade for, well, we fit between 75 and 100 chairs underneath the tent. So it's a much greater ability to provide shade for that.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenberg. Further debate? Mr. Palabchik.
Will this pavilion be available for rent for special events, thus bringing in more revenue for the town?
Ms. Rosenberg, would you like to answer that?
Currently, the tent is available for rent, and absolutely, it would be available through the use of town property.
Tell all your friends, okay? Because it's really quite attractive.
Further debate, Mr. Wolf.
A question. What are we currently spending on the rental of the tent? Because I can't help but think that that $60,000 would be better spent in terms of community preservation if it were dedicated toward affordable housing.
Ms. Rosenberg, for the purpose of answering the question, please.
We currently spend approximately $6,000 for that, putting it up, taking it down, and renting it for two months of summer.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenberg. Further debate? Are you ready for the question? The motion before you was the motion made by Ms. Fowler that, I'm sorry, that Article 32, the Baker's Field Shade Pavilion, be accepted and adopted as printed in the motions booklet. Those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries on a voice vote. Article 33, may I have a motion, Ms. Vivante?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, thank you. I move that Article 33, Historical Plan for Wellfleet, be accepted and-- I move that Article 33 Historical Plan for Wellfleet be accepted and adopted as printed in the motions booklet.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that Article 33 Historical Plan for Wellfleet be accepted and adopted as printed in the motion booklet. Debate on the motion, Ms. Vivante?
Many of you know that the Wellfleet Historical Commission is charged with working to protect and preserve the historical and architectural assets of the town of Wellfleet. We volunteer our time because we believe in the historic quality of this community and want to ensure that it is not lost. At our monthly meetings, we help property owners understand and find ways to preserve the unique character of their buildings while allowing for changing needs in a modern world. As a regulatory commission, we work closely with the Building Department to review renovation projects of any structure 75-years-old and older, or of architectural significance, such as the young and world-famous homes in the Cape Cod Modern House Trust. Decisions about each historic building must be faced in fact, and the Historic Property Inventory Form, Form B, is our primary source of information. These fact sheets contain information about buildings, such as when and how they were built, and in what style, what the character-defining features are, who owns them, and over the decades or centuries, and what roles those owners played in shaping our town. Most of the Form Bs were done in the 1980s by dedicated volunteers. Many include anecdotal information. An accurately-executed Form B prepared by a historic preservation specialist can take hours of research into a range of databases, historic narratives, deeds, maps, aerial photos and the like, and requires extensive professional knowledge. Nearly 200 forms have been updated using community preservation funds. Paper copies of these forms are located in the Wellfleet Library's Reference Section, and digital files are part of the Massachusetts Historical Commission's online archive. We also, besides the Form Bs, we also look forward to presenting our second annual Historic Preservation Workshop, and to the possibility of a summer intern to help with cataloging and documentation. Our mission to protect and preserve the historical assets of the town seems to fall naturally alongside that of the Community Preservation Committee. We are grateful for their and your support. Please vote yes on Article 33. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vivante. Further debate on the motion? Seeing none, the motion before you is the motion made by Ms. Vivante, that Article 33 be accepted and adopted as printed in the motions booklet. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a unanimous voice vote. Article 34, I have one more recommendation that was not printed in your warrant. The Social and Human Services Committee recommends Article 34 by a vote of five to zero. May I have a motion, please, Ms. Carlson?
Mr. Moderator, Article 34 Preschool Voucher Program for three-year-old children. I move that the sum of $100,000 be and hereby is raised and appropriated to pay the costs of funding a voucher system for children of Wellfleet residents who have reached the age of three years old, as printed in the warrant booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, this is sum of $100,000 be, and hereby is raised and appropriated to pay the costs of funding a voucher system for children of Wellfleet residents who have reached the age of three years, as printed in the motions booklet. And just note, please, that the motion as printed is contingent on the passage of an override question on Monday's ballot. Reminder again, the balloting is next Monday from the hours of 12 to 7:00 at the Senior Center. The question on next Monday's ballot associated with this, on which this is contingent, is question number nine. Debate on the motion, Ms. Carlson? Okay. Yes, Ms. Wilson.
This is my second favorite article on the warrant. I grew up here, and obviously, Hilda was the first.
Yes, can we just-
Yeah, somebody asked me a question here at the table. So I grew up here and went to kindergarten here, and the kids that couldn't afford it, couldn't go to kindergarten. And I feel that Wellfleet should provide a place in which people can hold down jobs and have children. And it's very difficult. There are the rents, we've heard about that, the housing, you know, expenses, we've heard about that. And funding this article would mean that we'd have babies through, you know, age four into school, seamless childcare for people living here. And I think it's worth it. It's a chunk of money every year, but I think it's worth it. And I don't feel that I'm subsidizing children. I feel like I'm making the community work better. And I, you know, vote for this.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I'm Ms. Carlson.
And many of you may know that Provincetown approved a similar program, but I believe they go younger. And in addition to what Helen said, it's part of a strategy of affordable housing, jobs, and childcare to help young families stay on the Cape and in our town.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. I'm Ms. Bacon.
Many of you don't know, if you don't have children, that childcare, just in Wellfleet alone, can cost an average mom or dad $2,000 a month. And that's only for three days a week. You know, the other rest of the days, they're really trying to make it work. I, I have a hard time thinking that, you know, with housing costs and the cost of living in Wellfleet, that somebody has to come up with $2,000 a month just for childcare. So I'm urging you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bacon. Further debate? Yes, Ms. Barokas.
Yvonne Barokas, I just wanted to add to this discussion that I believe this voucher is more than just childcare. It's preparing children to enter kindergarten. Having been an educator all my life, I can tell you, when children come prepared, when they've had experiences, when they've had schooling, they start kindergarten with a head start, and they do so much better. We want our Wellfleet children to be the smartest, brightest, best, so let's pass this.
Thank you, Ms. Barokas. Mr. Tucanian.
A question. When this program was originally proposed a couple of years ago, it was specifically in the motion limited to a preschool program. The discussion tonight suggests that it's for childcare in general. Does that represent a change, or is it the intention that it be to subsidize children in a preschool program?
Can somebody answer that question? Yes, Ms. Reinhardt.
Okay. I'm quickly rereading the article now that we don't read the whole motion. It is for preschool. It's a preschool voucher, that's the title of it. And it's, we've done it, a couple of years ago, we started it for four-year-olds, and we wanted to extend it to three-year-olds. And I will say, I know people from neighboring towns who actually want to move to Wellfleet just because of this program. It's really important. And there's many more towns, cities across the country that are starting to do this. And probably, in the near future, and I'll even say like five years, if we keep up with our great state government that's going on, it's pretty progressive, that the state will probably start including preschool sooner or later, I would say.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Tucanian? Yes. Thank you, Ms. Reinhardt. Are, you ready for the question? The motion before you is the motion made by Ms. Carlson under Article 34, that the sum of $100,000 be and hereby is raised and appropriated to pay the costs of funding a voucher system for children of Wellfleet residents who have reached the age of three years, as printed in your motions booklet. This requires a majority vote. It's also contingent upon passage of an override question, question nine on Monday's ballot. Those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? A motion carries on a voice vote. Article 35, I have one more additional recommendation. The Natural Resources Advisory Board recommends Article 35 by a vote of three to zero. May I have a motion, please, Mr. Hauck?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to establish a revolving fund for shellfish propagation, and the total amount that can be expended from said fund for fiscal 2020 is $5,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the town vote to establish a revolving fund for shellfish propagation in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, as printed in your motion booklet. The amount that may be expended from said fund for the fiscal year 2020 is set at $5,000. Debate on the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There's a lot going on with, with shellfish this year, and I, I took a little bit closer look at what's going on with the budget than the funding. The 2020 fiscal year budget, we're going to spend $420,000. That's what we approved last night. $364,000 in operating expenses, including the, the benefits and the salaries and the shellfish propagation program, as well as $56,000 in, in capital expense. In, in fiscal year 2010, we, we had an operating budget of $244,000. This year, it's going to be 364, so that's a 49% increase. I'm not surprised that that's going up. You know, the inflation has been 20%. Our general operating budget as a whole has gone up 39% in the same 10 years, so this is a little bit above average. However, the, the fees that we collect, the trend line is in the opposite direction. For the past eight years, we've collected $71,000. In fiscal year 2010, we collected $95,000. In 2013, it was $86,000. In 2017, it was only $35,000. There's really no compelling reason to change anything right now. I think what we really need to do is to take a deeper look into what the expenses are in the, in the shellfish department, and what the fees are that we're collecting, and decide if that's the ratio that we want, or whether we want to, want to increase the fees. And then after we decide that, then I think we can decide what sort of fund that we put it in. So, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion that we indefinitely postpone Article 35.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that Article 35 be indefinitely postponed. A motion for indefinite postponement is debatable to the same extent that the main motion is. Right now, we're just discussing whether or not you would like to indefinitely postpone this. Debate on indefinite postponement? Yes, Ms. Chivetta.
I'm Nancy Chivetta, the Shellfish Constable. The, the intent of this article that you would like to postpone is to take it out of the taxpayers' pockets. So it's kind of achieving what you would like to do anyways, it seems, because the users of the resource would be paying for the budget that goes to supply that resource. So it would take my entire, over time, this year I can only take $5,000 from it, but over time, it would pay for itself, so the taxpayers are no longer responsible. And, and so it seems silly to indefinitely postpone it, because then the taxpayers are responsible for it again. Right now, if this were, postponement were to fail, we could go back to having the users pay for it through the permit fees. And permit fees can be increased, and user fees can be increased. We can add new fees if necessary, and there's been some talk of that lately. So we can have new revenue streams coming into this revolving fund in order to take care of a budget line item that would no longer be the responsibility of the taxpayers.
Further debate on indefinite postponement only? Mr. Morrissey, briefly.
Mr. Moderator, if I might, the, the money's fungible. Right now, the fees go into the shellfish fund, and town meeting decides to take it out and use it for various reasons, usually within the shellfish department. So it's not going to change in this respect, other than it's going to make it more restrictive only to shellfish propagation. That might be the right thing to do, but like I said, there's a lot going on in the shellfish community right now. I think that we're going to have a comprehensive review, or I certainly hope we do, of the fees that are charged. And I wouldn't want, if we do increase the fees, I wouldn't want 75% of them going towards the shellfish propagation. We might use some of the fees to pay off the, the loan that we're, that we're going to be responsible for. So I'm not saying this is a bad idea. I just think it's a bad idea at this time. You can bring it back next year, after we figure out how do we want to, what fees we want to collect, and how we want to direct them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Further debate on indefinite postponement?
Yes, Ms. Wilson.
I suggest that we discuss this and vote on it tonight. Propagation saves money for the town if we do it ourselves, and if I understand it correctly, for the shellfish department to be able to count on a certain amount of revenue, and they'd be able to count on it, they wouldn't have to come to town meeting every time to expand their budgets. They have to be able to raise shellfish in a way that they can count on the revenue coming in. And using fees, there are always X number of fees, right? They could count on it, and have it go forward in a stable fashion, given all the other things that can happen with propagation, the weather, disease, and so forth, which they always have to deal with. I think we should decide this now for next year's propagation efforts, and I hope that the Shellfish Constable corrects me if I've gotten anything like what I've said wrong.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Ms. Chivetta?
So, no, you've got it right, Helen. And if we, if we stand back and look at what I'm trying to do now over the past couple of years, it's because this department has languished. There's been very little to no propagation money being spent. So the harbor needs help, and the harbor needs to know, if we want to have a sustainable fishery, we've got to make investments into the harbor resources. This article was supported unanimously by every single committee it came before, including the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen. And if you're worried about money going into the general fund, this is only on new fees collected. So there's about $99,000, last I checked, in the general fund that can be used for general, in the shellfish fund, that can be used for general fund purposes. And there's always going to be 25% in there that the town can use for its general fund. So, you know, it's been languishing for too long, and my goal is to create a sustainable fishery for the future, both for recreational fishermen, commercial fishermen, and, and the users will pay for it, so.
Thank you, Ms. Chivetta. Further debate on indefinite postponement? Yes, Ms. Bacon.
I would just like to call the question for, to postpone or not postpone?
Well, if you want to call a question, we'll have to take another vote. Are you ready, are you ready to vote on indefinite postponement?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Ford, I think we're ready to move to the vote unless you have something new to add.
Quick. We're spending a boatload of money on shellfish.
We're talking about indefinite postponement, please.
Yes, and this should be put off for at least a year till you figure out what's going on over Indian Neck, because you could use that area for propagation, et cetera. This is just burning more money. So we should put this off for at least a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Are you ready for the vote on indefinite postponement? Okay, the motion before you is for indefinite postponement. If you vote yes, we're done considering this article. If you vote no, we go back to debating the main motion. All those in favor of indefinite postponement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The motion for indefinite postponement loses on a voice vote. We are back to considering the main motion made originally by Mr. Hauck. Further debate on the main motion? Ms. Wilson?
I have a question through you to the Shellfish Constable. How does this work, and does it work in other communities?
Ms. Chivetta?
So Wellfleet is one of the top-producing shellfish towns on Cape Cod, and we have been struggling over the last six, seven years with propagation. Propagation happens everywhere in the harbor, not just on Indian Neck. It happens- It happens everywhere. And other towns like Barnstable, Chatham, Falmouth, they all have revolving funds. The state is looking to towns to create revolving funds, so that we aren't always beholden to the pressures that happen on town budgets, in order to propagate and create a sustainable resource for the townsfolk. So, the state wants us to do this. Other towns that are competitive with Wellfleet do this, and we are a little bit behind the eight ball, but I do feel like if we can make this sort of change, then the propagation will be paid for by the users, not by the taxpayers.
Thank you, Ms. Chivetta. Are you ready for the question? Okay, the motion before you is the motion made by Mr. Houck, that the town vote to establish a revolving fund for shellfish propagation in accordance with Massachusetts general law, Chapter 44, Section 53 and 1/2, 53E and 1/2, as printed in your motions booklet, and that the amount that may be expended from said fund for fiscal year 2020 is set at $5,000. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries on a voice vote. Article 36, I have a number of recommendations that were not printed in the warrant booklet. The Shellfish Advisory Board recommends Article 36 by a vote of six to zero. The Board of Water Commissioners recommends Article 36 by a vote of five to zero. The Comprehensive Waste Water Management Planning Committee recommends by a vote of four to zero. The Board of Health, I'm sorry, I don't have that recommendation.
Three to two.
The Board of Health recommends by a vote of three to two. The National Resources Advisory Board recommends by a vote of three to zero. And the Mayo Creek Restoration Committee also recommends by a vote of three to zero.
Mr. Moderator?
May I have a motion?
The Shellfish Committee recommends by...
Wait for the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. The Shellfish Committee, Shellfish Advisory Board recommends by a vote of seven to zero.
By a vote of seven to zero, not six to zero. Thank you for that correction. May I have a motion, please? Ms. Bacon.
Mr. Moderator, Article 36, Municipal Water System and Waste Water Funding. I move that the sum of $120,000 be and hereby is raised and appropriated to pay the cost of funding our view of a municipal water system's operations, and to refine the Water Enterprise Fund's financial model, and to work towards granting of a watershed permit by the Department of Environmental Protection, to begin the process of implementing a required 208 plan under state and federal law, which will be effective July 1, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to the sum, I'm going to just let you know, this is not as printed in your warrant booklet. There'll be an explanation of this, but it's been moved and seconded to the sum of $120,000 be and hereby is raised and appropriated to pay the cost of funding our view of municipal water systems operations. The text of this continues as printed in your motions booklet, except that the motion stops after the phrase "effective July 1, 2019." The way the motion is being made now, it's no longer going to be contingent upon a ballot question. Explanation, discussion, Mr. Horton.
One of the things staff dreads about town meeting is when you make a mistake, it's up for public humiliation, and you have to admit it in front of 200 or 300 people. This is one of those scenarios. So, town council reminded me or pointed out that the ballot question for an override needs to include a dollar amount. And when we were discussing this earlier on, I left the dollar amount out and didn't put it in. So, the ballot question is no longer a viable question in order to provide funding for this. So, today I spoke with the Department of Revenue and asked them for recommendations on what can I, they request, advise you that you do very conservative budgeting, that you don't estimate your receipts too highly. And so, I said, if I brought up this by $40,000, would you be okay with that? If I brought up this line item in the estimated local receipts, would you be okay with that? So, what we did is, we basically, I got the approval from the Department of Revenue, with the state, who is the one who officially sets our tax rate, received the authorization for them to increase our estimated local receipts, which then meant that I could provide the money that is required for this article without requesting an override. So, that is why on this article, we stopped it at effective July 1, 2019, because it's no longer contingent upon an override passing at the ballot box. I should have caught that before, but did not. What I'd like to explain just a little bit about this article, as you recall, last year we were before you asking for a Water Resources Director. We've looked at that position and have felt like we're not quite at the point where we want to ask you for a new staff person. So, what we're doing instead is, we're asking for funding that would provide money to hire a consultant. It may be two different consultants. One of the things that I think is very important to do is look at our water system, the financial model for our water system. I looked at, you know, the budget that you approved for the water system, over half of the money to fund the water system budget is coming from the general fund. It's not being sustained or supported by the fees that are coming in, and that's only going to get worse over time. So, we've got to look at that financial model, and we've got to figure out how to make it work as it was intended to work. The second part of it is dealing with the watershed permit that will be issued by the Department of Environmental Protection. We don't feel that we are at a point yet where we need to hire a staff person to help with that implementation. So, we want to hold off on hiring a staff person, instead want to hire consultants to help us figure out the model of how we're going to make that happen. We talked originally about making, waiting a year, but we've just recently received some information from the Department of Environmental Protection that would indicate to us that they're moving a little bit faster than we thought they would. And so, we don't want to wait a year, because if we wait a year, and they come up and they're ready to move forward in six months, if we don't have any abilities to implement the plan in place, we would then have to put it on hold for six months. So, that's why we're asking for it this year, instead of waiting a year to do this, so.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Further debate? Ms. Carlson, did you wish to speak?
I'm speaking from my previous life as, seven years as the Chair of the Water Commission. And we have five volunteer water commissioners who do a great job, but what happened with the water system, under a consent order, we built Cole's Neck with 66 connections. And then, the town went under a consent order for the central district and the municipal buildings. So, we built, we put $71.1 million into the system, 70% was grant, and that was a fair amount of infrastructure. It's a water tower to serve the whole town, 10 miles of 50,000 feet of iron pipe, four wells, two pumping stations, 95 hydrants. We serve the municipal buildings and almost 400 potential connections. However, I mean, that was great, 70% grant money, but we did not add a single staff person. And so, the water system today is run with the same resources as 66 connections in Cole's Neck. We have been, Whitewater does the water testing and monitoring, and we have a part-time clerk. So, we'd like, the water system would like somebody with public utilities background to help the town understand how to staff that system, and do it cost-effective, but do it safely. And then, as Dan had said, the financial model that was originally put into place with the big expansion, had some assumptions that didn't pan out, which is normal for a financial model. So, the rate structure and some of the legalities of changing the financial model need to happen, so that we can stop asking for contributions from the general fund, and put the water system on a more self-sustaining basis, and a financially sound basis for any kind of expansion that might need to happen. So, the volunteers aren't public utilities specialists, so we need some expert help. And I think that we can probably get the financial model looked at for about $30,000, and then we can get some expert help looking at whether the system is properly resourced. And it would be good also to get some professional grant writing help, because there is considerable federal and state money coming into the clean drinking water area, but we have to compete for that money. And it's money well spent to get professional help on that grant writing. So, those are the kinds of areas that I hope you'll support. These are some long overdue resources coming into our water system.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Further debate? Ms. Shuster?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just have a question, and I apologize for not being able to catch up with all the minutes and the videos that the town is great about making available to all of us. And I probably have this answer if I had actually done that, but I'm wondering, Mr. Moderator, if anyone from the Board of Health, given that the committee was fairly split on this, just curious as to what that was about.
Is there someone from the Board of Health who would like to respond to Ms. Shuster? Okay, Mr. Granland, I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Granland.
Yes, I'm Ken Granland, I'm the Chairman of the Board of Health. The issue that we had with this, well, it started last year when they were looking for a new staff member. We felt that this person would not be doing anything besides stepping on toes. Your Board of Health, we work very diligently on water quality. That's not wastewater, but we're trying to control all nitrates from everything, any kind of source that we can control, septic systems, where wells are set up. We were just not very comfortable with, we did approve them, this question, three to two. I was one of the ones that approved it, because my health agent suggested that we do need some money, but the problem that we all have with this is, we haven't been kept up to date with any information. We have not talked to the wastewater people since about a week before, or two weeks before last year's town meeting. So, we're just having difficulties reconciling all the questions that we have with what they are planning to do. I don't know if anybody in this town actually knows what the plan that they are working on, on some of the things that are going to be involved with it. So, there are a lot of issues that we have, as just as the Board of Health, so.
Thank you, Mr. Granland. Ms. Shuster, to answer your question? Thank you. Further debate? Yes, Ms. Wilson?
Mr. Moderator, a couple of things. I supported this article because, and I was on the drafting committee for creating it, along with Ms. Carlson, Dan Horton, Alex Hay, who's on the Wastewater Comprehensive Waste Water Committee, and Joseph Powers. So, a little budget item. The Water Commissioners have a great deal of support, and this year they've added about $4,000, so that they can send their billing program, so that the bills get done by an outside contractor. They have a very good contractor called Whitewater, who helps them with everything technically. And Whitewater, I'm not looking at the figures right now, my bad, but Whitewater gets paid about $78,000 or something a year, and is much needed. And Whitewater meets with the Water Commissioners regularly, and is in good touch with them, and they monitor the system. The Waste Water Committee, which is a separate, whole separate thing, is, was created about, what was it, 10 or 12 years ago? Town meeting gave them $500,000, and they have $60-something thousand dollars left, which, you know, they have some outstanding bills. My impression, having been on the drafting committee, is that this article was meant to meet needs in this coming year that may come up because of this 208 plan. In other words, getting a watershed pyramid will have extra chores for certainly the Conservation Health Agents Department. And it's so that if we get this watershed plan for the 208 plan, which we hope we do, and I take my hat off to the Comprehensive Waste Water Committee for, you know, getting it this far, they can get the money they need to get that stuff done. And separately, the Water Commissioners, if they need someone to come in and do a training, if they need a little extra money to do something in terms of coverage from their contractor, wastewater, Whitewater, you know, who does all the monitoring, the infrastructure, they can pay for it, so the coverage is more complete. And it can be broken down into separate expenditures and available as needed by the health, you know, Conservation Department, by the Water Commissioners. It isn't just for maybe getting some consultants. This money would be available for them to meet their practical needs, which they have.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Further debate on the motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Reinhardt.
So, you can see this as a complicated issue, right? Mr. Granland even said it's confusing. What Helen just said is confusing. And to simplify it, I would just say that we have a very important wastewater committee. We all know what that is. We also have a water commissioner or committee, and they are run by volunteers. They're run by volunteers. And we're getting to the point where, for expansion and to meet the 208 requirements, we will be getting money from the 208 tax. But this is so that we can start supporting these two different systems and committees, starting with a consultant.
Thank you, Ms. Reinhardt. Further debate on the motion? Yes, Ms. Granland.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. I'm concerned about the structure of this, and I have concerns about the way that the article has been drastically changed and not necessarily publicized to people who have not had the opportunity to be in the audience and assumed that this was going to be a ballot question. So, my concern is, I have my thoughts personally on the article, but I do have concerns. I'm wondering if someone can address those concerns about the legality of not having this major change, because it's not a ballot article at the last minute.
Well, just having a motion which differs from the, what's in the warrant is a question of scope, and I discussed, that's the moderator's call on this, and it was my decision that this change does fall within the scope of what was being, what was being suggested, that the town was being put on notice that $120,000 was going to be spent. It was initially intended to be contingent on the override, but it's my judgment that this does still fall within the scope of the warrant article, so I'm okay with it from that standpoint. Mr. McGee?
Not speaking for the FinCom, but as somebody who's on the FinCom and has had the opportunity to have a number of presentations on this plan by the Waste Water Committee, you'll probably note in the variety of responses from the various committees that there's a bit of confusion about what's covered here and what's not. And one of them was addressed by the representative from the Board of Health, which is one of governance. Is this about stepping on toes or not? But the other piece that has gotten short shrift so far, I think, is that Wellfleet has to come up with a plan at some point, and sooner rather than later, to comply with the 208 plan. And one of the benefits of doing that, as I understand it, in the shorter run, is that we then get consideration as a watershed, which is not a common thing on the Cape, which buys us some time. And what does it buy us time to do? It is to mitigate the amount of nitrates in the harbor. The inability of us to do that would require... The inability of us to do that would require, or we would be required by the state to put in an extensive sewer system. By becoming a designated watershed area, we buy time, as I understand it. Not yes, if that's true, thanks. But in any case, it's sort of a race to the horizon. You have a number of ways of mitigating nitrates in the harbor. A clean harbor is one, so dredging will help. More oysters will help, and so on and so on. But it's an additive thing. You add this and that and that and that, and you get to a target. And if you meet the target, the state says, "Great, you don't have to put sewers in." If you don't meet the target, we are looking at the potential of $150 million sewer system. And if you think the costs from last night were a lot, $150 million will get your attention. So, is this position necessary, is kind of the question? I think the fact that it has now been withdrawn as a permanent position and as a consultancy takes, takes us into a place where we have a leap of faith. Do we think that it's important to have a concentrated expertise that's going to look at, number one, solving the issue of sustenance for the water system, but also compliance with the 208 plan, that we import that expertise in a concentrated way? And in some ways, resolve the immediate question of who it reports to and whose toes are being stepped on, and just say, "Look, we have a consultant. We'll take their information. Worst case, we've wasted the money. Best case, we have an answer and we have a way to go forward." Whether it's a full-time position or not is to be determined in the future.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Are you ready for the question?
Mr. Moderator?
Okay, I guess not.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson, something new, please?
Yes. I would like to point out that nowhere in this article or in the motion does it mention a consultant. This is money that won't necessarily be spent, but which will be there in case there's some way these two groups might need help. And getting a consultant isn't the only way it would get help. So I'm going to vote for it because of that.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Further debate, Ms. Hearn?
Sorry, I'm just still a little confused. You spoke about it not going to a ballot, and I agree. Is that what's happening? We're going to decide here, and it's not going to be on the ballot? Because I think with this...
It'll be on the ballot, but it'll be moot because the motion was made so that the ballot question will be there, but the ballot...
So that's different than it being outside of the scope of the warrant. That's a procedural thing that I think is major. I agree with something so important. Everyone's for clean water, but this is a group that was given half a million dollars and didn't do the key deliverables, and everyone has a lot of questions. So I think this is a major problem that it's not going to be voted on at the ballot.
Further debate on the motion, Ms. Lowenstein. Lowenstein, I'm sorry.
Both the Water and Wastewater Committees Commission are in need of some professional guidance, and the hope is that this, this amount, this money will be, will be used in order to move them from where they are to where they need to be. These are, these are committees of volunteers who don't necessarily have the expertise they need to, to answer the questions that need to be answered. And it's also, it's, it's a, it permits spending up to $120,000. It doesn't necessarily all have to be spent. So I really think that we need to, we need to get to that place where we have some answers, where we have a clear path to go forward, and I really recommend that people vote for this. Thank you.
Mr. Felix?
Yes, just a couple of quick comments. First of all, I think the confusion is exactly why this was changed from a consult, from a permanent position to, "Let's look at what we need to do to implement this in the town." I think that's pretty simple. It's very straightforward. That's the reason this is on the warrant the way it is, and I hope you'll vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Felix. Are you ready for the vote?
Yes.
The motion before you is the motion made by Ms. Bacon, that the sum of $120,000 be and hereby is raised and appropriated to pay the cost of funding a review of the municipal water system's operations and to refine the Water Enterprise Fund's financial model and to work towards granting of a watershed permit by the Department of Environmental Protection to begin the process of implementing a required 208 plan under state and federal law effective July 1, 2019. Those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries on a voice vote. Article 38, may I have a motion, please? Ms. Wilson?
I think it's 37.
Yes, I'm sorry. Article 37.
Okay.
May I have a motion, please? Ms. Reinhardt?
The old Shellfish Shack renovation. I move that the sum of $42,000 be and hereby is raised and appropriated to pay the cost of renovations to the building known as the old Shellfish Shack, as printed in the warrant.
In the motions booklet?
Excuse me?
As printed in the motions booklet.
Oh, in the motions booklet.
Is there a second?
Yeah, sorry.
It's been moved and seconded that the sum of $42,000 be and hereby is raised and appropriated to pay the cost of renovations to the building known as the old Shellfish Shack, as printed in the motions booklet. Debate on the motion, Ms. Reinhardt?
Okay. So, everybody knows what the old Shellfish Shack is. This has been discussed for a long time. If you've been by there in the last five, five to 10 years, you know that it's dilapidated and actually has been probably unsafe. Sometime in the fall, I think the DPW did go in and make things secure and kind of fix broken windows and board them up. So the two different opinions, the two different opinions would be, "Let's just tear it down." And the other opinion, which is one of the opinions I have come to agree with, is that if we tear it down, it's gone. You can't, because it's on the shore, on, close to the beach, once a building is gone, you can't build it again. Now, we just had a quick discussion where, could there be a pavilion? Could there be something? I don't really know. But the Shellfish, Shellfish Constable is using it now. The Shellfish, they're using it for stories, they're using it to, I want to say, build the cages and build racks and things like that. So it is in use. It's important because they need more space than they have. There have been a number of things that could be done with it, such as putting an upweller in there for shellfish, again, doing a pavilion with some benches under it so people can get out of, out of the sun. And my point is, is if we tear it down, it's gone, and who knows if we really can build anything there. And in the meantime, while we decide, there should be really a nice marina committee that wants, that gives a good plan for the marina, but that's in the future. And, yeah, we should just fix it up, make it look nice, rather than an eyesore and a dangerous eyesore at that, until something better might be done with it.
Thank you, Ms. Reinhardt. Further debate, Mr. Tucanian?
Thank you. I'm the chair of the town's Building and Needs Assessment Committee, and I just want to acquaint you with studies that have been done with respect to this building over the last six or seven years. I think the building dates back to a 1948 annual town meeting vote to construct a bath house, so it's approximately 70 years old. But in, late in 2013, the then Shellfish Constable became concerned about the air quality in the building and engaged targeted inspections to do an inspection. They produced a written report in December of 2013. They noted that there were elevated levels of airborne mold, detectable odors, invisible microbial, microbial contamination. In response to that, the Shellfish Department was relocated out of that building. In 2014, the town used a qualifications-based procurement process to select a design firm to evaluate all four of the town's waterfront buildings, the Shellfish Building, the Beach Sticker Building, the Restrooms, and the Harbor Masters Shack, Harbor Masters Office. An architectural firm was hired. They hired as a subconsultant, a civil engineer. They looked at all of those buildings, and in September of 2014, they produced an extensive written report, which is still on the town's website. Their recommendation with respect to the Shellfish Building was, quote, "Remove building from service and demolish." On January 25 of 2017, the Building and Needs Assessment Committee considered the condition of several unoccupied town buildings, this being one of them. And considering the two previous reports and the physical condition of the building, the committee voted in January of 2017 unanimously to recommend that the Shellfish Building be demolished, septic system be removed, water service capped, utilities removed, and the site restored. That was communicated to the administration. It was discussed at more than one Board of Selectmen's meeting. There was a site visit attended by members of the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator, and myself, among others. Out of that meeting came a question of what renovations could be made to the building without triggering a code upgrade. And by code upgrade, I mean full compliance with floodplain regulations in the building code and so forth. So the assistant town administrator obtained a written appraisal of the structure, and appraisal company of Cape Cod produced a 13-page report and valued the building at $0. As a result of my investigation, analysis, and information gathered, I estimate the market value of the improvements as of the date of inspection to be no value. The town administrator communicated that to the building commissioner and requested his advice as to what that, impact that had on renovations to the building. The response by email came back. If the building appraisal came back as actually $0, there are two options. One, demo existing and then build a new building, ground up to current building code and FEMA mandates, per n, if any engineer is willing to certify the structural remediation, close per n. Or two, lift existing sentimental structure and install a new FEMA-compliant foundation, which will be a substantial cost to save the structurally insufficient structure. In response to that, the Building and Needs Committee was asked to revisit its recommendation, and in August of 2017, we did revisit that at a posted meeting and voted to leave the January 25, 2017 recommendation unchanged. The building is in a velocity zone. It's probably the town structure that is most exposed to potential coastal storm damage and sea level rise. I express no opinion on whether the expenditure is worth it from a sense of community or tradition, but I want you to be aware of the condition of the structure and the challenges that will be present if you decide to renovate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucanian. Ms. Lowenstein?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recognizes that this building has some sentimental value to some members of this community. However, in light of this information, and we were made aware of quite a bit of this during our deliberations, if not, not all of it in that detail, but you'll notice in the, in the warrant that the Finance Committee specifically does not recommend this expenditure. This building is not salvageable. The Shellfish Department may indeed need workspace. I understand that they do, but I think other accommodations can be made, and I think that this expenditure would simply be a waste of town funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lowenstein. Further debate, Ms. Wilson?
Mr. Moderator, you see on your warrants that I'm one of the five people on the Select Board who voted to recommend, you know, getting it to the people. I, however, am firmly against anything except demolition. My favorite tradition, the one that I have the most sentimental attachment to on that beach, is beautiful open beach. I don't think we should spend one cent on anything in that area, given what we know about sea level rise and everything Mr. Tucanian already said. I was on the board when we got these massive amounts of reports in great detail about what's wrong with the building. And although, as you may have noticed, I thoroughly support the Shellfish Department, I really think that we should demolish this building and not put, once again, one penny into any totally unessential structure in the floodplain there.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Ms. Morrissey?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, through you. Is there anybody here who could tell me how the $42,000 sum was arrived at and exactly what that's supposed to buy?
Yeah.
Mr. Horton, if you can answer that? Excuse me.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. The $42,000 number was arrived at in working with the building inspector, who used the assessed value of $84,000. Fifty percent of that would be the $42,000 figure, which he believed if we did renovations for $42,000 or less would not trigger the, bringing it all up to code. The, the cost of the renovations is calculated at just over $30,000 for supplies. What that would do is put new siding on the building, put a new roof on the building, and put new windows in. So the basic idea of what they were doing was to make, secure the envelope of the building so that water, et cetera, would not be able to get in, into the building. It would also involve mold remediation. The remaining $12,000 would be for labor cost. We don't currently have a person on staff. It's an open position right now of facilities maintenance. So I suspect that if this motion did pass, we would have to hire a carpenter or somebody of that sort to do the work for us.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Ms. Hearn?
So you may have remembered me at special town meeting, tried to talk about this. I don't have any slides tonight because this is really about the DPW and its responsibilities for buildings. When we strip from the charter what the DPW does, we're going to be seeing a lot more of this, of hiring out for labor. So just so you know, we got a mold report in December of last year, and it costs $6,750 to take the mold out of there and strip it down to the studs. That's like no money. So I, I'm shocked that people don't see the beauty in that building. It's made of fur. There's nothing wrong with it. The appraisal that was done was incorrect. They didn't even know what year it was built. So, I mean, it's such small money for such a huge improvement, and I think you should seriously consider what the DPW is not doing for us.
Ms. Sir? Yes, Ms. Carlson, something new?
Yes. I don't have any sentimental attachment to that building, and it wasn't the reason for my recommending that we fix it up. It's more that I'm thrifty and that the big building's functional. It's being used now for storage by the Shellfish Department. It exists. We own the footprint. If we lose the footprint, we can't rebuild. I have an old barn on my property. It's kind of crummy, but it has a plywood floor and stores my stepson's motorcycle. And I think sometimes when it's town property, it's $30,000 of new floor here and $50,000 in new floor there, and it's all got to look so perfect. And I don't think that our buildings necessarily do. We didn't used to be that way as a town. We used to be a thrifty Yankee town. And for matters of Yankee thrift, I recommend we fix that building and let it continue to do honorable service.
Ms. Trevetta?
I couldn't agree more. We are using it for all of our aquaculture assembly, and a lot of stuff happens in the summertime. We share our office with the Beach Department, and the Beach Department moves in. It's filled with people all summer long, and that's when we do most of our work. So we really do need a place out of the sun to stage our stuff, to get the baby oysters into their little bags where then they get planted on the grant. So we do need a workspace. This seems like short money to really remediate the inside of that building, which is gorgeous. And it just gives us a storage spot in the winter, a place to work year-round, and it would be great if we could have it. Johnny and Chris are very sentimentally attached to that building. Johnny's been with the department 14 years and Chris for 19. So it would be a nice workspace for us.
Thank you, Ms. Travetta. Ms. Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I've been dealing with the Shellfish Shack since I've been a Selectman. I think we voted to demolish it twice, and now it's been resurrected again. But here's my problem with the building. It's been sitting in that condition, deplorable and dilapidated, for a number of years now, and it is in one of the prettiest view sheds of all of Cape Cod. Our visitors and our guests see that dilapidated building, and that's, I'm sorry, unacceptable in my mind and making me crazy. You can decide whether you want it to stay or go, but if it goes, know that we'll never rebuild there because, as Helen said, it is a FEMA floodplain. To, you know, build to code in FEMA right now would be very financially exorbitant for the town to incur. So, if it stayed, it could service the shellfish department for, you know, the warmer months out of the year as a workspace. It could also serve for the Historical Society to put some type of, you know, shellfish exhibit. This is our history. Shellfishing is our history. If we can put something down there to the guests and visitors that says, wow, that's what a clam rake looks like, or that's what a basket looks like, or whose boots were those, that could be kind of fun. But you guys decide, because I've been dealing with this for a while now. Thank you.
Okay. I would like to try to move us to a vote. If somebody has something new, Mr. Felix?
Yes, just a quick question, Mr. Moderator. Thank you. I think all the voters would like to know what the alternative cost would be, which is for demolition. That might be helpful for everybody. Thank you.
Is there anyone who can answer that?
I don't think anyone's estimated it. Our, I mean, yeah, nobody's. Mr. Tucanyan.
I'm sorry.
Does our building inspector know what demolition would cost?
Mark Vincent.
I'm not sure we can give you an answer on that.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I believe Harry Tucanyan knows the answer to that.
Ms. Wilson's putting you on the spot, Mr. Tucanyan. Do you have a figure for demolition?
I do not.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Mr. Combler, Mr. Costa, Ms. Letronau, and I'd like to try to move to a vote, please. Briefly.
We, the Historical Commission, just asked for money to survey housing in Wellfleet that's over 75 years old. My calculation, this fits that. It's a funky house, building. It looks kind of decrepit. I like the fact that it's a funky building. It looks kind of decrepit. I don't want our town to be spiffy and neat and clean and Newport. I want it to retain some of its old funky character, and this is a funky old building. It will open the viewpoint, but will lose something. And I don't, for the money, why not keep it?
Mr. Costa, briefly.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Boy, a little building like this really builds a whole bunch of pros and cons. I just think that we ought to keep the building because it is our history. If we could fix it up to make it look right and have it kept right, I think that's the way to go. It's definitely an emotional and cultural kind of a decision to make. It's not a money decision, and sometimes it's really smart to make not money decisions. It's just decisions about us and our culture. Thank you.
Further debate, Ms. Letronau.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you, a question to whoever could answer it, and this is to help me in my vote. If we have, at this point, two appraisals from two different parties on this, one is at zero and one is at 84,000, and we expend the 42,000 to fix it, and it turns out that the zero appropriation is actually what is correct, what liability do we then have to bring that building up to code?
Someone who can answer that question?
Anyone else? So, I think we have to clarify what bringing it up to code is meaning. We're really not bringing it up to code that in the sense that we're putting in septic, we're going to raise it, you know, raise it up. All we're doing is just keeping the building and cleaning it up. We're cleaning it up to, yeah, we're just cleaning it up, you know? You know what I mean?
Follow-up, Mr. Moderator.
We're repairing it. We're making it look.
Just a quick follow-up. Janet's through.
I'm sorry. Ms. Letronau?
I'm sorry. I might have misunderstood, but my indication, understanding was that anything over $42,000, if it turns out that it's appraised more, less than that, we must build, bring the building up to code, including of all the floodplain regulations. That was my question.
So, I don't remember.
Reinhardt, if you just, I see our building inspector there. Perhaps he can shed some light on this. Mr. Post.
I believe she's correct.
Justin Post, building inspector, new guy. I can't claim it anymore.
Can you raise your mic up, Mr. Post?
Yes, sir. Is that okay? When you reach 50% of the fair market value, is how FEMA labels it. Okay, it's fair market value. You can use appraisals and assessments. I use the assessment because we have a number there. I've never seen zero. Didn't know how to handle it. So, I think it's Wellfleet's choice overall to not make this indecision. A decision would be good here, but it's Wellfleet's choice.
Are you ready for the question?
I'd like to talk to.
Briefly, please, something new.
Very briefly. My name is Dale Sipple, and I grew up here, and I just wish we could use it for historical, because every time I go by, I remember when I used to go get ice cream and hot dogs there at Mayo Beach. It's such a beautiful, it's part of our town, so that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Sipple. Are you ready for the question now?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'll do this as long as you want, but I get the feeling that I'm not hearing a lot that's new. Mr. Elkin?
I'd like to point out that FEMA has floodplain regulations for a reason. It designates areas that really should not be built in for a reason, and that is that it's likely to be washed away in a storm in the near future, and we should not be putting money into a building which will be likely washed away in a storm or the contents ruined.
Okay. If you're ready for the question?
I'd like to say one thing, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wright. I think the voters would like to see us move on to a vote. I haven't heard anything new in the past few minutes.
I'd like a place to people to put on their bathing suits.
Mr. Wright.
It's the one free public beach that we have.
Mr. Wright, you have not been recognized. Thank you very much. Mr. Ford, I'm going to move to the vote.
Demolition's going to cost.
I'm sorry.
Demolition's going to cost you $10,000 to $20,000, and 42,000 will just.
I'm sorry. Could you speak closer to the mic?
Demolition is going to cost you $10,000 to $20,000.
Please.
And the 42,000, just bring up the third maintenance to a normal standard, sort of.
All right. Thank you. The vote, the motion before you is the motion that was made by, I'm sorry, by Ms. Reinhardt, that the sum of $42,000 be and hereby is raised and appropriated to pay the cost of renovations to the building known as the Old Shellfish Shack as printed in the motions booklet. I will point out that the motion as printed and as, that we're voting on, does have a contingency. It's contingent on the passage of an override ballot. Ballot question 10 on next Monday's ballot. The vote here tonight requires a simple majority. Those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? It appears to me that the motion has failed to achieve a voice vote. If, let's, we can, just to reassure everyone, let's have that done by holding up your cards. All those in favor of the motion, please hold up your voter cards so we can see visually. All those opposed, please hold up your voter cards. Appears to me that the motion has failed from a visual look at the voter cards. Mr. Apolovchik.
Perhaps we could ask Chief Pauli how fast the thing would burn down.
I don't think that's a relevant question. Thank you.
It would be a practicing exercise.
I'll tell you from experience that trying to get permission to burn a building is a lot harder than you think. State DEP doesn't care for those kinds of things. Article 38. May I have a motion, please? Ms. Wilson.
Article 38. Waiting for silence. Thank you. Article 38, Wellfleet Balloon Reduction Bylaw. I move that the town vote to amend its general bylaws, Article 7, by adding a new section to Article 7, balloon reduction bylaw as printed in the warrant in Article 38.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to the vote, that the town vote to amend its general bylaws, Article 7, by adding a new section to Article 7, balloon reduction bylaw as printed in the warrant in Article 38. Debate on the motion, Ms. Vivante.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have some slides. There we go. Balloons are an environmental hazard. Balloons can travel thousands of miles and pollute the most remote and pristine places. That's Duck Harbor there.
If you could try to speak a little more directly into the microphone, it would be helpful.
Sorry. Balloons kill countless animals on land and in the sea. Next slide, please. All balloons, including those falsely marketed as biodegradable latex, fall to earth as ugly litter. Next, please. This is balloon litter at Newcombs. We've all seen it. It's one of those Mylar, you know, happy birthday balloons. Next slide. More balloon litter. This is your kind of standard latex. You often find them when you walk on the beach. The balloon and then the string, and they're just very dangerous. There are so many earth-friendly alternatives to balloons. They're widely available. Bubbles, bunting, pinwheels, banners. I've seen pinwheels on Route 6 now advertising realtors' locations, so that's nice rather than the balloons. And I hope that you'll please vote yes on Article 38.
Debate on the motion. Further debate? Mr. Wood?
I'd like to know if this includes condoms and why not?
I guess.
Can I, meeting will come to order, please. Ms. Vivante.
They're technically balloons, but I think I'm just going to.
I think a simple yes or no will suffice.
Mr. Moderator.
No, it does not include condoms.
Ms. Lowenstein.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I have a question for the Recycling Committee, and that is, did you at any point discuss just a ban, just a disposal regulation as opposed to all sale, banning all sales?
Ms. Vivante.
Yes. No, we wanted to, we followed the Orleans model in this bylaw, and we think that as with our other plastic reduction bylaws, it's, it does ban the sale and the distribution, so that's why we had it this way.
Thank you, Ms. Vivante. Ms. Bacon, and Ms. Wilson, and then Mr. Donovan.
This was one of my suggestions. I don't know when I went to the Recycling Committee and to the Board of Health, but I realized what other towns on the Cape were doing with balloons. And if you've ever been to the beach or done one of our beach cleanups, either the ribbon from balloons or the balloon itself is one of the biggest things that we're picking up here. And it's, it's not so much that it's creating litter, but it's affecting our water fowl and our marine life. And if we're going to be a town that's going to be, you know, a coastal destination, we have to really start considering what makes us that special. And it is our marine life and our birds and our fish, and these balloons are killing them. So, I would hope that you support this. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes. Mr. Wood made a joke, but actually, I have blown up a condom, and, don't laugh, don't laugh. What we're talking about is exactly what Ms. Bacon just said. And I love balloons, but you know what? We're going around a big bend here environmentally, and we have to start thinking about other species.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Mr. Donovan.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of the regulation, but I think it's somewhat meaningless unless there's some effective enforcement. So, would if someone discovered a violation of this, would the littering fine also apply? Because the idea of not allowing the sale is kind of a 1990s idea. I saw today about 80 different offerings of balloons on Amazon, but without enforcement, this doesn't really mean anything.
Is there someone who can speak to Mr. Donovan's question?
Well, this is for sale in Wellfleet, not for sale at large, you know. Would be our stores that would be prohibited from selling them, just the way they're prohibited from distributing plastic bags and selling plastic bags and polystyrene.
Mr. Curley.
I'm all for banning the sale of balloons. I mean, you see them all, or especially the ribbons I see more often than the actual balloons along the beaches. The one issue I do have with this article is the enforcement section. It says that she'll be enforced, or the bylaw may be enforced by any town of Wellfleet Police Officer or other designated agent authorized by the Select Board. I think putting additional responsibilities on the police department is not a wise decision. We already operate with a pretty small force overall, especially during the summer, which is peak balloon season. So, I was wondering, has any discussion been held as to what the other enforcement agents could be and if those options have been explored?
Is there someone who can answer that question for Mr. Curley? Ms. Vivante, can you answer that?
Yes, say the Health and Conservation Department might be such a person to issue a warning or a fine.
Thank you. Further debate? Ready for the question?
Yes.
Okay. The motion before you is the motion made by Ms. Wilson that the town vote to amend its general bylaws, Article 7, by adding a new section to Article 7, balloon reduction bylaw as printed in the warrant in Article 38. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries on a voice vote. Under Article 39, I have a couple of additional recommendations that were not in the warrant. Under Article 39, the Planning Board recommends by a vote of five to zero. The Conservation Commission recommends by a vote of six to zero. May I have a motion, please? Ms. Carlson.
Mr. Moderator, the disposition of town land to Conservation Commission, I move that the care, custody, management, and control of the parcel of land shown on Assessors' Map 46, Parcel 19, be transferred to the Wellfleet Conservation Commission as written in the motions booklet.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that the care, custody, and management and control of the parcel of land shown on Assessors' Map 46, Parcel 19, town-owned land on Hatches Creek, be transferred from the Board or Commission having custody as printed in the motions booklet. Debate on the motion, Mr. Herter. And just to let you know, there is a laser pointer there avail, it's on the lectern there if you need it.
I can use my finger. I'm Bruce Herter, the Chairman of the Open Space Committee. The Open Space Committee is advocating transfer of six town-owned properties from care and custody of the Select Board to the Conservation Commission. All the properties are fragile, adjacent to bay, marsh, or barrier beaches. All contain areas of critical environmental concern, all but other conservation areas. We're making these recommendations because we believe the properties are environmentally important. They are town-owned lands, so there'll be no cost to the taxpayers. The transfer to CONSCOM adds a layer of protection to the properties, and all CONSCOM properties are inspected yearly, providing for diligent care of the land. The Article 39 parcel, right down here, is on, is on the Eastham border, and the five parcels in Lieutenant Island, Article 40, are all on Lieutenant Island. For Article 39, if we could get the next slide. For Article thirty-nine, if we could get the next slide. The parcel we're proposing to transfer on Map forty-six nineteen is a five-point-five-eight acre parcel, which is one-point-six-five acres of upland and three-point-nine acres of lowland. It abuts Hatches Creek and the Audubon. It's virtually all, it's about ninety-nine-point-two percent, in area of critical environmental concern. This property is not buildable by virtue of access and frontage issues as well as its proximity to wetlands. It is landlocked and in a flood zone.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Herter. Further debate on this motion? Seeing none, the motion before you is to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of the parcel of land shown on Assessor's Map forty-six, parcel nineteen, town-owned land on Hatches Creek, to be transferred from the border commission having custody thereof as printed in the motions booklet. This motion proposes to transfer care, custody, and control of a piece of town-owned property, and as such, it requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a unanimous voice vote. Article forty, I have some additional recommendations on Article forty. The planning board recommends by a vote of five to zero, and the conservation commission recommends by a vote of six to zero. Article forty, may I have a motion, please? Ms. Bacon?
Article forty, disposition of town land to Conservation Commission, I move that the care and custody, management, and control of the parcels of land shown on the Assessor's Map as forty, Parcell eighty-one, one-seventy, one-seventy-one, one-seventy-six, and one-eighty-four, town-owned title and dune properties be transferred from the board or commission having custody thereof and for the, from the purpose for which it is held, to the Wellfleet Conservation Commission for the purpose of open space.
Is there a second?
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the care, custody, management, and control of the parcels of land shown on Assessor's Map forty, Parcell eighty-one, one-seventy, one-seventy-one, one-seventy-six, and one-eighty-four, as printed in your motions booklet. Debate on the motion? Mr. Herter?
The five properties presented on Map forty include two-point-one acres of upland and four-point-three-seven areas of lowland. Parcells one-seventy and one-seventy-one, down at the bottom, are coastal dune and barrier beach properties located south of the southwest Lieutenant Island parking area and beach One-seventy-six is on the northwest corner and includes barrier beach and flats that are productive for wild-set shellfish. Properties eighty-four and eighty-one are upland and bordered by an eroding coastal dune and acres of wetlands to the south. All are not buildable, contain areas of critical environmental concern, and areas within the flood zone.
Thank you, Mr. Herter. Further debate on the motion? Once again, this proposes to transfer care, custody, and control of a piece of town-owned property and requires a two-thirds vote. The motion before you is the motion made by Ms. Mo, excuse me, by Ms. Bacon, as printed in your warrant booklet. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a unanimous voice vote. Article forty-one, again, I have some recommendations that were not in the warrant. The planning board recommends Article forty-one by a vote of five to zero, and the Conservation Commission recommends by a vote of six to zero. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Siani.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the care, custody, and management, and control of the parcel of land shown on Assessor's Map fourteen, Parcel one-twelve, be transferred from the board or commission having custody thereof and from the purpose for which it is held, to the Wellfleet Housing Authority for affordable housing purposes.
Is there a second?
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the care, custody, management, and control of the parcel of land shown on Assessor's Map fourteen, Parcel one-twelve, be transferred from the board or commission having custody thereof as printed in your motions booklet. Debate on the motion? Mr. Siani.
First of all, to locate this, this piece of property, it's a little over a half acre, and there's nothing like having Elaine McElroy as backup, I want to say. It's, you come out of the library, at the restroom exits, out to the parking lot, down Howlin', make a left down Howlin', come to Chequestet, make a right, couple hundred yards, and you're up to Freeman. And it's a half-acre lot right in there. We have ascertained at this point that it is a buildable lot, and it is not in a flood plain. It is only a half acre, so it is really only suitable for a small, two-bedroom project. I can't tell you how grateful I was that you ratified Article twenty-nine, because it's certainly going to make us a lot better at figuring out what to do with some of these things as we go forward. You've heard several times this evening how complex this housing business is getting. So we're asking your support for this half-acre site, and that's it, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Siani. Further debate? Seeing none, the motion before you is the motion made by Mr. Siani that the care, custody, management, and control of the parcel of land shown on Assessor's Map fourteen, Parcel one-twelve, be transferred from the board or commission having custody thereof as printed in your motions booklet. Once again, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion carries on a unanimous voice vote. Article forty-two, again, I have some, some recommendations that were not printed in the warrant booklet. The planning board does not recommend Article forty-two by a vote of three to two. Article forty-two, may I have a motion, please? Ms. Bacon?
Article forty-two, disposition of town-owned property, long-term lease, I move that the town vote to approve Article forty-two regarding the transfer of the care, custody, management, and control of a portion of ninety-five Lawrence Road, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a long-term lease for a period of up to ninety-nine years. Said portion to be leased containing at least four acres, but not more than six acres, for the purpose of creating community rental housing. And the remaining portion of said property to continue to be held for the purposes which it is currently held, as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the town vote to approve Article forty-two with the language as printed in your motions booklet. Debate on the motion? Ms. McElroy?
Mr. Moderator, can I just ask a question first?
Yes.
Did you read a recommendation from the Open Space? I believe they made one.
Just a moment. I, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have that. Is there someone here from the Open Space Committee? Yes, Mr. Herter? Mr. Herter is informing that the Open Space Committee recommends the article by a vote of five to zero, is that in favor? Yes, thank you, Ms. McElroy.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, everyone. I'm Elaine McElroy. I'm chair of the Wellfleet Housing Authority, and I'm very happy to be able to be here tonight to give you some information about this very important article, which adds nothing to the tax rate, but would make a world of difference to our town. But we need your permission. A positive vote on this article tonight would begin a long, rigorous process of study and due diligence by a cooperative group of people in the town, select board, housing groups, appropriate town boards, and you, the public, to express your thoughts about creating community housing on town, available town-owned land at ninety-five Lawrence Road. The blue areas on your map are the land that is available and that would be studied. It's, there's between four and six acres that we are looking at. The study, the due diligence that would be done at this point on this land would then result in putting out a request for proposal to a developer to build community housing in this area. The ball field and the water tower would not be touched, and there would be a possibility that with this project, there could be improvements made to the ball field. If you, if you came to the forum or if you've read some of the newspaper articles, you do know that we had a preliminary site evaluation done by Coastal Engineering, which showed that this site is appropriate for development. It has its level, it has access to services, it serves by two roads, it's close to the school, close to town center. And you may have also read in that report that it said that the maximum capacity for this land could be ninety bedrooms. But that does not mean it is the correct number of bedrooms. That is what all this pre-development study would be looking at, to find out what is appropriate, what's feasible, what's something that the community could be proud of. And that's where we're gonna need your help. It would be an open process to do all this study and to prepare the RFP. It's open to the public. We're very happy we presented the idea to the school committee, and we have the support of the principal and the school committee. And they would be certainly very important people to be involved in any development At the point of the request for proposal, if the developer is selected, it will be the job of the developer to find the funding for the project and to manage the eventual As with Golpon, Golpon, the six apartments there was a three-million-dollar project. You paid no additional taxes for that housing. We did give them some, we gave some CPA money, and the Housing Trust Fund contributed two-hundred thousand dollars to help it happen. But a project like this has access to a great deal of state and federal funding. So who will live there, and why are we calling it community housing? The vision that we'd like to put forward and to study and to work with you on is community housing, which is a mix of size of units from one, two, or three bedroom, and a mix of income levels, up to market-rate housing. We would envision this would be an appropriate site for housing that would work for people involved in our service trades, our home health aides, our retail people, artists, and up to our municipal employees, firefighters. I don't know if you've seen the posters of three wonderful young people that the CDP is advertising for showing the need for housing. There's a medical assistant, a high school teacher, and a firefighter, all looking for housing. And then it would also, could include market rate. I can, I know a lot of seniors that had to leave this town. They wanted to downsize. There was no place to go. They sold their house. They could afford, afford a small market-rate apartment in Wellfleet. So that's the vision we'd like to work on. Who will, who will live there? Because there's so many people that need housing, and we're not producing enough. Unfortunately, the process involves a lottery. That's kind of sad, that we don't have enough housing for everybody that comes along. There has to be a lottery, but that's the law. And with a lottery, seventy percent of the housing is guaranteed for Wellfleetians, for people that live in Wellfleet, work in Wellfleet, or send their kids to school in Wellfleet. The other thirty percent is open to Wellfleetians. It's open to all our friends that have to move away from Wellfleet, and it's open to anybody who has a reason to want to be in Wellfleet. It's housing, it's, it's a housing that creates a neighborhood of all different kinds of And why are we doing it? We've read the headlines, you know, there's a documented need for housing on Cape Cod. And just a few of the reasons for this particular project. There's a large and growing affordability gap between the cost of rent and renters' income. Since nineteen sixty, renters' incomes have increased by only five percent, while rents have risen sixty-one percent. In the past six years, Cape Cod has lost three thousand year-round units and gained five thousand seasonal units. This is a trend that's going to continue. In nineteen, in two thousand fifteen, the rental rate in Wellfleet was zero percent. It's actually been zero for quite a while, I think. When I moved here in nineteen eighty-one, in February, the only rental available was a small cottage with a really small wood stove, and I bought my first electric blanket at the Aim thrift store. I thought, cool, this is how fleetians live. All right, kind of exciting. At Golpon, the six apartments, the six new apartments that people moved into at the end of last year, there were sixty applications for the six apartments. And seniors, as I said, have no option for downsizing when they want to. But the most troubling one that we've heard and from our recent housing study and reports from the Cape Cod Commission, in Wellfleet, those in the twenty-four to forty-four range, raising their own families and establishing community roots, decreased by sixty-two percent between nineteen ninety and two thousand and fifteen. When our kids attended school here, starting a little over twenty years ago, I remember the number, there were two-hundred-and-twelve kids in this school. The last number I heard, I think at the forum, there are a hundred and five kids in the school now. That's just in twenty years. A recent article in the Cape Cod Times about schools looking at way to support families and keep children in the community included a quote by Michael Goodman, who's a housing expert from UMass Dartmouth, and we've worked with him in the past. He's worked in a lot of Cape towns. He loves the Cape. He knows the Cape. He was quoted as saying, "Cape Cod is conducting a social experiment, testing the viability of a society without children."
Ms. McElroy, I did say I would ask presenters to try to keep it to about ten minutes.
So who is going to be here? Who's going to do the work of our community that we love? We can get serious tonight and make places for them and support, support and sustain our community with a positive vote on this article. I hope you will let the process begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McElroy. Further debate on the motion? I'd ask if you hold your applause after the speakers, please. Mr. Hood?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Jim Hood. I'm the chair of the Board of Water Commissioners for the town's municipal water system. The Board of Water Commissioners unanimously supports the proposal to lease the land on Lawrence Road for the development of community affordable housing. Furthermore, we support the connection to the town's water system for the proposed housing, because it's right there, it's adjacent to that property. Wellfleet has an adequate supply of high-quality... Wellfleet has an adequate supply of high-quality drinking water. In fact, it is among the highest-rated municipal, municipal water sources on Cape Cod, according to a 2017 report prepared by the Environmental Working Group, a national not-for-profit dedicated to protecting human health and the environment. Our primary water source, the wells located at the Boy Scout camp off Old County Road near the Council on Aging, and, and the mains that carry the water from that site to the central district, and the water storage tower are adequate to meet current and future demand. However, redundant water source, the Coles Neck well site north of town, is limited by a four-inch main that was installed back in the 1980s. That station is on Coles Neck Road, goes down Coles Neck Road to Paul Dyke Road. There's approximately two miles of four-inch water main that's there. The hydraulic flow from that main is currently adequate based on the, but based on the proposed expansion of the system, the flow will likely exceed the average daily maximum allowed by the Department of Environmental Protection. In accordance with the Department of Environmental Protection's regulations, the system should have the ability to meet average demands if the primary water source, the Boy Scout camp here, is offline. Regardless of whether or not the housing project is connected to the municipal water system, DEP may eventually advise the town, and they have the authority to do this, that we must replace the four-inch main that runs down Coles Neck Road. I only raise this because I want to make sure that the town understands that this may be an issue for us, it should not be a factor in defeating this motion. In fact, as I said, we fully support this. Eventually, we're going to need to replace this main anyway, and if it's two years out or whenever. But we must face the prospect of that DEP may say that it will have to be done sooner than later.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. Further debate, Mr. Parent.
Mr. Moderator, the information that I gave to you earlier, it's been brought to my attention by a member, that possibly that three to two vote against at the last meeting was three to two, no recommendation. The original vote by the planning board on this article was five-zero in favor. The planning board has, as you are aware and have passed, many zoning bylaws in the town of Wellfleet during the past number of years for affordable housing. The board is totally in favor of affordable housing. This particular parcel is, in fact, on town water. At the original presentation, the board was not made aware that this was going to be at least number one. And number two, the information was not brought to probably the housing authority or to the planning board that there could be a potential increase in expenses to the town of Wellfleet based on the water problem that Mr. Hood just stated to you. So the planning board felt that at this time, it would be more prudent to proceed cautiously and to find out through the water department and through the state as to what is going to be required to either accept it as is or have to bring it up to code, which would mean ripping out present water lines and increasing it. And who would pay for that? Would that come before the town of Wellfleet as an expense? Would it come before the individual who won the project bid as part of the application? So these are the kind of questions that the planning board had, which felt that as important as affordable housing is to the town of Wellfleet, and the fact that the hindrance to much of affordable housing in the town of Wellfleet is the fact that we do not have town water. Most of the towns earlier that you saw behind me have town water, so therefore they can increase density substantially on smaller properties. For the most part, Wellfleet does not have that. This parcel, if updated or granted a sanction from the state, is in the right location and can exceed present zoning. So that is the reason for the planning board's information and presentation in their vote. I just wanted to make that clear to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Parent. So just for clarity's sake, the information that I gave you earlier was incorrect. The planning board voted by a vote of three to do to make no recommendation. I'm sorry, I misstated that. I was giving incorrect information. Ms. Bacon first.
I'm not sure. Our housing chair, Elaine McElroy, mentioned that this property was vetted and went through a very strict feasibility study with an engineering firm. And it came back, really, with no red flags. Why have we focused on 95 Lawrence Road? We focused on this property because it gave us the acreage, it's a walk to town, it's next to an elementary school, and we can get water to this property. It's the only place we have left to go. We don't have another option for putting in housing here. There's, there's, there just isn't the land anymore. And to get back to a comment that Mr. Parent made, you know, who pays? Who pays in the end when we don't have young people here, or we don't have a sustainable community? Who's going to pay? We are. So I would urge you to pass the disposition of this property to the housing authority, allow them to do the due diligence, and let's get the show on the road, because we don't have time to waste on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bacon. Further debate, I'm sorry, your name, please?
Kathleen Smola.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would just like to share with you shortly, a short, a short little comment, because I am a lucky recipient to be on Gol Pond. I've lived on the Cape 30, over 30 years, taught here, lived in Wellfleet now for about three. I love the Cape, I love Wellfleet, and I sat in that lottery and bit my nails while I had to wait to see where I would fall. And there were people among me that were in the same position. And I would have not thought five years ago that I would have been in a housing crisis, but a chain of events led to it. And sometimes life happens, and you can't prevent that. So I just want to say what a difference it has made in my life. To go to bed at night, I say thank you, and you are giving that to six people, more than that. And I think, I just wanted to say thank you, Wellfleet. And I hope that you can be creative in figuring out the things that come up. The WHA is amazing, and I am really grateful to them as well. And I just really urge you to do this, because part of my journey with this is I had a typical stereotype in my head before I went through this, that was like, this is what the typical demographic is for people that need affordable and community housing. And I really wasn't one of what I thought was that. And my neighbors, I have people with young families, I have, that are next to me, kids in high school that are obviously with parents, single, older, retired folks. It's everything that Mr. Sorkin and Elaine talked about, and, and more. And so I'm just asking you, you know, think about what the right thing is to, to give the legacy to these kids in Wellfleet. I'm all about kids because I teach. So give the legacy of young kids and young families, and of course, to the older, single people or older, married people, you know, give them something to come home at night and be able to say, I have a secure, stable place I can count on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smola. Further debate, Ms. Shepherd, and then, then Ms. Wilson. Ms. Shepherd?
Yeah. I'm a new member of the planning board, but I'm speaking as an individual. I believe, I have a question and a comment, so maybe I'll make the comment first. I mean, I would urge everybody to support this amendment, and, and, but I want everybody to support it with the full knowledge of what the costs to the town may be. I think that the costs are worth it, that this is an important enough goal that we should approve the motion. But my question is, does anybody know what it would cost to put in the eight-inch main that is required for this housing development to work?
Is there a, yeah, Mr. Felix, are you able to answer that question?
We don't know. We don't know.
Thank you. Mr. Hood, do you, do you have a more detailed answer, perhaps?
We have a rough estimate from environmental partners that the cost of replacing the main on Coles Neck Road could be in the range of $2 million.
Thank you. Ms. Shepherd, okay, you still have the floor. Okay, Ms. Wilson.
Finally, I too was a water commissioner, and I have followed very closely what goes on with our water system since then. I was a water commissioner in 2003, 2004, 2005. One of the things that hasn't been discussed is the fact that more and more, and it should be the case here at this end of the Cape where water is really our most precious resource, our aquifers, it's a limited resource, is that when you do a new set of buildings like this, you double-plumb them. Meaning that, and there is a good water source there, right there on that lot, the school used to get water from it, but you do, you don't take everything from the water system. Now, that may or may not necessitate having a larger diameter pipe for the water system. But the second thing I want to say is, and you can serve a lot of water then, in other words, you don't have to take it all from the system, you don't need as much, you don't need as many gallons per day. The other thing I have to say is, ever since I was a water commissioner in the early 2000s, I've been aware of this four-inch pipe. And independent of this article, at some point, we're going to have to make it bigger. And it's a lot of money, and I hate pipes in the ground, and they are the Achilles' heel of a water system. They are the greatest expense going into the future, because you have to replace them every 30 years or so. But this one long stitch of pipe that's almost two miles will have to be replaced sooner or later. And maybe, if there's some way to connect it to affordable housing, we might be able to get some funding for it. I'm unsure about that.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Mr. Barokas?
Yeah, Mo Barokas. Helen just made the point that I was going to make as well. I was on the Board of Water Commissioners years ago, and we knew then that that pipe on Coles Neck sooner or later would have to be replaced. I would hate to see that be conflated with what we're trying to accomplish here. And I hope everybody was listening to Kathy. Her story is, is deeply felt one, and Wellfleet gave her an opportunity that she didn't have before, and it changed her life. And we're here to do good, we're here to do better. And, and again, the water issue, let's not conflate that with the, the point of all of this and what we're trying to accomplish. We're trying to house people who need housing. Please vote for this.
Thank you, Mr. Barokas. Mr. Felix?
Yes, I just want to echo what Mr. Barokas just said. The water issue is not an issue relative to this housing development. In terms of why, we don't know what it's going to cost, is because even though we have an estimate for Coles Neck, there is an alternative of bringing water from the, from the wells that need redundancy down Route 6 and Uprire Lane, there's alternatives. And as Ms. Wilson just said, there are other alternatives with a housing development that's affordable housing, we may be able to get grant funding. So water's not an issue here. We'll be able to get water. What is ultimately going to cost the town is probably going to go down as we begin to develop this. But the other thing I'd like to point out is the town meeting already passed money in the wastewater and water article that will supply resources to look at this question more closely, and we're going to have to look at it one way or another. It should not be a reason to vote this down. I urge you to vote for it. Thank you.
Mr. Palavchik?
Mr. Moderator, through you, if there's anybody in here tonight who's against this article, I request that they come up and present their argument. If not, could we please move the question?
I will go with that.
Are you ready for the vote?
Yes.
Okay. Now, motion before you is the motion made by Ms. Bacon that the town, I'm sorry, that the town approve Article 42 regarding the care transfer, I'm going to start that again. Ms. Bacon moved that the town vote to approve Article 42 regarding the transfer of the care, custody, management, and control of a portion of 95 Lawrence Road, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a long-term lease for a period of up to 99 years. The rest of the text of that is as it appears in your motions booklet. Once again, we're proposing to transfer of care, custody, and control of a piece of town-owned property. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries on a unanimous voice of aye. Article 43, may I have a motion, please? Mr. Kartzunas?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to request the Board of Selectmen to place the following question on the next scheduled election ballot. Shall the town of Wellfleet, Massachusetts petition the General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Congress of the United States for greater local control to mitigate and/or manage the growing Cape Cod seal overpopulation problem as well as the expanding Great White Shark problem?
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, and I'm sorry, I don't have that text verbatim in front of me, but the motion made by Mr. Kartzunas to place a question on the ballot, I'm, there we go, thank you. Mr. Kartzunas moved that the town vote to request the Board of Selectmen to place the following question on the next scheduled election ballot. Shall the town of Wellfleet, Massachusetts petition the General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Congress of the United States for greater local control to mitigate and/or manage the growing Cape Cod seal overpopulation program, problem as well as the expanding Great White Shark problem? Mr. Kartzunas, the debate will open with you. Before we begin debate on this, I just want to caution, I'm not going to allow this meeting to go down the rabbit hole of talking about seals, and sharks, and surfers, and tourists, and so forth. The question before you is very simply, do we want to place, to request the Selectmen to place a ballot question or not? So with that, Mr. Kartzunas.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is John Kartzunas, and good evening, everybody. This is probably my first time addressing such a large crowd, so bear with me. Just like Ms. Carlson, I'm a frugal Yankee as well, and unlike most of the articles up to now, this one doesn't involve your checkbook. Let's be clear about what we are voting on tonight. Quite simply, we are voting on whether or not to put this question on the next scheduled election ballot, to give us a choice. That's it, folks, it's pretty simple. And with this in mind, I am going to begin, if I may, with a short story you may have heard before. I know it's late, and everybody's tired, and please, it's not a bedtime story, so don't fall asleep on me. The story is called "The Kid in the Candy Store." It's a story about choices and making decisions, which is why we're all here today. A kid walked into a candy store with his dad and was bedazzled by the array of treats available. "What should I choose? What should I choose?" he asked himself. "Come on, son, we don't have all day," his dad said. "Well, these are my favorites here." "No, wait, those are my favorites there." He walked along the aisles, picking up bags and putting them back. He just couldn't make up his mind. He just couldn't make up his mind. "Quick, son, make up your mind. We have to go," his impatient dad said. Frantically, the boy ran around the store but couldn't make a decision. Eventually, the dad had had enough, grabbed the son by the hand, and they both walked out empty-handed. The young boy had tears in his eyes. He wanted them all, but ended up with nothing because he could not choose. Ladies and gentlemen, we're all that boy here tonight, and the world is our candy store. We have a myriad of options available to us. But if we don't make a decision to place this question on the next scheduled election ballot, we end up empty-handed. Sometimes we worry about making the wrong choice. What if we regret the direction that we take, and it's too late to go back? The bigger danger is that we make no decision at all and end up going nowhere and doing nothing. What if a year, or 10 years, or 20 years from now, we look back and say, "We should have done something"? Ladies and gentlemen, what kind of legacy do we want to leave our children, grandchildren, nieces, and nephews? For those of us here tonight that might be thinking of voting no, let's be very clear, let's be very clear on what a no vote really means. By voting no, you're basically saying that you don't want a discussion or debate, you don't care what your fellow residents think, that in effect, it's my way or the highway. If you are thinking of voting no tonight, what you're really saying is that you are against democracy. The very reason why we are here tonight-
Please give Mr. Kartzounas the same courtesy we've given all the other speakers. He's a mover of the motion-
Thank you.
Has about, perhaps, another three or four minutes to wrap up.
By voting, by voting yes tonight, we will be giving all our residents a voice and a choice next April. By voting yes, we will put the question on the next town election ballot, so each one of us can vote their conscience in private, whatever your position is, as our founding fathers intended. A yes vote will give us the option for local input on this very crucial issue of seals and sharks affecting all of us here tonight. By voting yes, we will be choosing democracy. My fellow neighbors, let's not be like the child in the candy store. Let's make a decision to have a choice and a voice. Let's emulate Concord. Let's be that shot heard around the world again. The whole of Cape Cod, if not the world, is watching what we decide here tonight. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Kartzounas. Further debate, Ms. Wilson?
Respectfully, I have sat through many, many meetings in this community and elsewhere, as have many people on our staff, or a good number of them, about this issue, listening, and other people on the Select Board have also listened to what the community thinks. I do like to hear what the public says in the privacy of, you know, voting. People, people vote in private, and you, you get a truer sense of what the community wants. But on this issue, all kinds of points of view have been represented at these meetings, and they've been very big meetings, and they continue, and we have a lot of information about it. My issue with this petition is, as far as I know, there are only maybe three ways to mitigate the seal population. One is you kill them.
Ms. Wilson, again, I did say I do not want to discuss mitigation of seals, I do not want to discuss great white sharks.
Okay, so I will finish by saying-
Very simply, is this going to be placed, requested the Selectmen to place on the ballot or not?
I'm just going to address what you asked me to.
Please, please stick to the point.
The point is, this is not a question that I, as a Select Board member, would want to have on a ballot, not because I don't want to hear from the community, which I've been doing, you know, ever since this has started happening, but because I don't believe it can be done in a way, any way, that's either legal or humane or possible.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Further debate on the motion? Ms. Reinhardt.
Okay, there we go. So I asked you this at the forum a couple weeks ago, and I'm still very unclear on exactly what you're, what you mean, what your intentions are, what you see as procedure your, excuse me, you know, let's talk, okay, I know, but you're-
Ms. Reinhardt, if you have a question, please address it.
I'm asking Mr. Kartzounas that, you're asking the Selectmen to put something on a ballot, and I still don't know exactly what your intentions are, that we're supposed to put, just, you know, just say exactly what you want us to vote on.
Mr. Kartzounas, could you answer Ms. Reinhardt's question, please?
So your question is that, what my intention is for the Board of Selectmen, if I'm understanding you correctly?
So you, you say you want us to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Congress of the United States, for greater local control to mitigate. Without going into a lot of detail, what do you, what are some of your examples of how to mitigate? What would you like to see in mitigating?
Well, quite politely, that's not the question here tonight.
Okay, all right, good.
Ms. Reinhardt.
Okay, yeah, no, he did this last time.
Ms. Reinhardt, please.
I know.
The, the question before you is whether, whether you would like to have this question to, let me rephrase that. Mr. Kartzounas's motion is to request the Board of Selectmen to put this question on the next town election ballot. And just to be clear, that would be the next town election, which may, may or may not be until next, next, late April or May. But just so you're clear on that, again, the details of what Mr. Kartzounas is asking is not what you're being asked to vote on tonight. Mr. Kartzounas, do you have anything additional to add to Ms. Reinhardt's question?
No, it's, my specific intention was to give the voters of Wellfleet a voice and a choice, and up until now, the voters of Wellfleet have not had that. And I am asking for more local input and control over our affairs. We do it when it comes to pesticides and the utility companies, even though we're mandated a certain way. We do it when it comes to immigration, we want to take more local control. So this is just another way of the residents of Wellfleet to actually vote their conscience in private without being castigated or stigmatized in any way. That's all it is. Put the election, put the ballot or the question on the election ballot, and let the people of Wellfleet decide. I am not going to tell you how to vote. I am just proposing to put the question on the ballot. It doesn't get much simpler than that, folks. You know, please hear me out, that's all it is, no matter what your views are. I'm not going to tell you how to conduct your views. The question, if it's placed, and I hope I get the support, and I hope that the Board does recommend for it, because I would want them to think and to understand and to see what we all think.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kartzounas. Further debate on the motion? Yes?
My name is Rosa Warner. I'm 14 years old, and I go to Cape Cod Lighthouse Charter School, and I'm here for a homework assignment.
You do, you do need to ask my permission to speak because you're not a voter.
Oh, okay.
Would you like to speak?
Um, yes.
You may have my permission.
Okay.
I'm sorry, could you tell, tell me your name again?
Rosa Warner.
Rosa Horner?
Warner.
Warner, oh.
That's, that's daughter.
Long way away.
I am speaking as a deeply concerned individual who urges the town of Wellfleet to vote no on Article 43, which encourages the idea of killing the seals in the town beaches. I think a more humane solution should be considered, for example, relocating them or even taking advantage of the technology that is being developed to deter the-
Again, I, I'm sorry to cut you off, but again, the, the question before us is really not whether or not we should or should not be killing seals, it's strictly on the ballot question. If you would like to address whether or not this should go on the, the town, or whether or not the Selectmen should be asked to put this on the town ballot, if you could address that, please.
Um, I think you should put it on the town ballot.
Thank you.
Okay.
Further debate? You may not just shout "Call a question" from, from the audience. I'm sorry, the rules of town meeting are, if you want to call a question, you need to go to a microphone, you need to be recognized. I will not recognize anyone who shouts out "Call a question" from the audience, that's not the way it works. And I want to give this, it's a little premature to be calling a question, there are a few people that would like to speak. Further debate? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. I'm Isabel Robishow, and you should vote-
I'm assuming you're not a voter as well?
[laughing]
Am I correct?
Yes.
You may speak.
Thank you. [laughing]. You should vote no on Article 43 because seals are vital to our ecosystem, and it shouldn't be an option to kill them.
Again, again, Ms. Robishow, I, I, I'm greatly appreciative of the fact that young people are interested in this process, but to be fair to the voters here, we are discussing not the issue of seals, we're simply discussing the way this ballot, this, this motion was, was worded. It's, we're simply discussing whether or not to request the Board of Selectmen to, to put an article on the ballot. I, I, I'm sorry to, to, to have to cut off all this other discussion, but to be fair to everyone else, that, that's the way the motion is worded. We do need to speak to the, to the motion before us, so thank you for your interest, though. Further debate? Mr. Downey, is it?
Someone had a point of order?
Yes, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Town Clerk.
Is this working? There we go.
Point of order.
Just in the interest of, for the students, I can make contact with your teachers to let them know that you completed your assignment. [laughing]
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Clerk. I just, I, I, I feel badly cutting off young people, but I, part of the learning process is understanding what town meeting is all about, and at town meeting, whether you're young or old or somewhere in between, you must speak to the issue that's being raised by the, by the Warren article. So the, the motion is to request the Selectmen to place this ballot question. Is it Mr. Downey, is it?
Taylor. Drew Ta, Drew Taylor.
I'm sorry, apologize. Go ahead.
I support putting the question on the ballot because I truly believe that everyone here tonight has a voice and a vote that counts regarding this very important issue. Why? The balance of our ocean environment and ecosystem is important to each and every one of us, because the overall health of all ocean species is critical in maintaining a healthy and balanced ocean environment and ecosystem. Because our local economy is either directly or indirectly connected to our ocean and bay waters, and when there's a significant imbalance, parts of, parts of or all of our economy will suffer greatly. So the question is, do we want a voice and a vote to have this question placed on the next scheduled ballot? In my humble opinion, we're at a critical intersection with this very important issue. Tonight is the night where our response to this question will have a direct or indirect impact on everyone in this room. And as John stated earlier, our children, our grandchildren, nieces, nephews, tourists, and so many more will be affected. Will they be able to live, work, play, and enjoy the Wellfleet that we've all known for decades? Time will tell.
Again-
By voting yes and choosing to work together, Wellfleet will be an exemplary model for others to follow.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Further debate? Mr. Wolf?
I'd like to reinforce what the last speaker said. This article has been unfairly categorized as a "kill the seals or kill the sharks" article. It is nothing of the kind. It is an article to give us all, regardless of our point of view on this critical issue, a voice in how we come to terms with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Further debate? Yes, Ms. McGee.
Hi, Deborah McGee. I just want to make one point, and that is that both seals and the sharks are on the federal endangered species list.
Again, not to the point, please.
The point is that we are not going to solve anything by, by a vote here, and there, I, I don't believe that putting a, putting something on a ballot is going to really make a difference at all, and doing something that's going to allow us to mitigate, whatever that means, is not going to happen, so I suggest vote no.
Further debate? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I'm Suzanne Ryan, and this is obviously a very contentious issue. I, I don't know that a vote is going to solve anything. We're all going to be very divided, and, and I really am not sure what petitioning Congress or other government agencies, what that is going to accomplish. Are we going to take matters into our own hands if we don't like what they say? The issue of overpopulation, it's, it's bigger than Wellfleet, not the population, but those animals don't just belong to Wellfleet, they're part of a bigger ecosystem. And I don't think, I would, I'm not against debate per se, but I would like to think that people would educate themselves more on the issues and then have a debate about it.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Yes, Mr. Parkinson, thank you.
Let me bring this up a little bit. I wanted to speak to a couple of different points. I, I hear an ethos being echoed that seems to insert that we have no voice, that Congress is set in stone in its federal regulations in the Marine Mammal Protection Act, and I educatively disagree. I think there is a call for coastal towns and communities to speak their concerns to Congress. I think that the Marine Mammal Protection Act is there for protections, but not indefinitely, and for very economic reasons. We manage our oceans broadly and specifically. This is a part of a greater ecosystem management program that the United States embraces. I think Wellfleet needs to speak its voice. It may put us in the news, it may put us in the news in a light that we don't like to hear, or that we don't like to look in the mirror to see ourselves in the news that way. I think unfortunately, we're going to be in the news regardless. I think this may be a, a point where the, the community can, you know, take it to a private vote. It will probably incite some very contentious conversation, but I think that conversation needs to be had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parkinson. Further debate on the motion? Mr. Franchito.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You know, euphemisms like democracy, community, working together, don't really reveal what is behind, I feel, this vote, and I really feel it should not be on the ballot because it's step one towards ecological disaster and consequence, and human further, and humans' inhumane legacy going even deeper. We have a bad history on this planet of slaughter-
Again, Mr. Franchito, I-
I'm sorry.
Strictly to the question of whether, whether or not you would like to see the-
And this will accomplish nothing, it's just a first step in the wrong direction, in my opinion. Please vote this down. Thank you.
Further debate? Are you ready for the question, or?
[laughing]
Yes, I, I, unless somebody has something dramatically different to offer. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
Your name, please?
I need to ask your permission because I'm not a voter.
Okay.
May I speak?
Yes, your name?
Thank you. My, my name is Nina Phillips, and this is the first town meeting that I've ever been to, and I have to say that it is truly impressive because you are a really, truly democratic society here, and I think that it's extraordinary to see, and I'm very, very surprised that there's any contention over putting something on the ballot, because these issues are very, very important to be discussed, and in a community like this- And in a community like this, where we have the selectmen and select board and access to all this information, I think it goes back to Dave Dillinger, power of the people. And I think that we should really step up and, and do what's right here.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. If you're ready for the vote?
Yes.
Okay. The motion? All right, sir. It sounds like the body would like to hear what you have to say. Your name, please?
My name's Eli Foley.
Foley?
I don't believe this should be on the ballot because I don't think this should be a decision that's just up to one town, especially when it's going to have a greater local, greater impact than just us locally. I don't think we should have the final word on this. It should be a bigger decision than us. I believe we should have a voice, but I don't think it should ultimately be up to us.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Mr. Kumbler?
The problem is, this will not be discussed if it's on the ballot. It will be a ballot issue. It's complicated. There's a lot of issues that need to be talked about, ecological issues, there's economic issues, there's a lot of issues that need to be publicly discussed. If you put this on the ballot, people will go in and say, "I don't like seals," or "I don't like sharks," and vote, you know, "Let's tell Congress to give us the right to kill seals," or whatever, without a serious discussion of what the issues are. If we want to have a serious discussion and involve democracy, don't just put a vague and confusing and rather nonsensical issue on the ballot and ask people to vote on it. Have a discussion and come up with a formal program that makes sense, that we can talk about, that we can discuss, that's logical, rather than this sort of, "Oh, let's have democracy, let's put something on the book." Voting for something doesn't necessarily make it democracy if you don't know what the fuck you're voting about.
Mr. Howe, something new? Yes, Mr. Howe.
I, I'm exhausted.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to call the question.
Okay. Okay. Do we need to vote on calling the question? No, no. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. We're, we're going to move on.
My name is Laureen Kartounas.
No, I'm sorry. The question has been called, so either we vote or we take a vote to call a question. Okay, all those, if we call the question, debate is over. If you vote no on, on calling the question, it means we can continue to debate this. All those in favor of, and you're not voting on the motion, you're voting whether or not you want to end debate. All those in favor of calling the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The question has been called. We move to the motion. The motion that we'll be voting on is the motion that was made by Mr. Kartounas. Mr. Kartounas moved that the town vote to request the Board of Selectmen to place the following question on the next scheduled election ballot. Shall the town of Wellfleet, Massachusetts petition the General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Congress of the United States for greater local control to mitigate and/or manage the growing Cape Cod seal overpopulation problem as well as the expanding great white shark problem? Those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The notion, motion fails on a voice vote. Mr. Kartounas, the, the debate is over. Thank you very much.
I'd like to call the standing count.
It's, Mr. Kartounas has requested a standing count. Before we do that, let me see if I can do this, do this by a show of cards, please. All those in favor of the motion, please, the, the motion that Mr. Kartounas moved, those in favor of the motion, hold up your voter cards. Those opposed to the motion, hold up your voter cards. It seems clear to me that the motion fails on a show of cards. Article forty, I'm sorry, Article forty-four. I believe I have some other recommendations on Article forty-four. Yes, Article forty-four, I have an additional recommendation from the Wellfleet Bike and Walkways Committee, who recommend Article forty-four by a vote of five to zero. Article forty-four, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move Article forty-four as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
It's been moved and seconded that Article forty-four be moved as printed in the warrant.
This is simply a request to the assigned committees and boards in town to take another look at the proposed bicycle plan. A number of people have asked why this photo was used in the flyers we've been giving out, and the answer is because the Department of Conservation and Recreation is proposing a two-mile, ten-foot-wide hardened path that will lead directly onto Route Six across from the so-called Ghost Bike Memorial. The bicyclists who will be coming out are probably going to be inexperienced because the real bicyclists are capable of moving right up Route Six without any problem. This is going to cross a multitude of curb cuts where cars will be pulling in and out, boats will be being trailered in and out of Bay Sails Marine. If the bicyclists choose to go, say, toward Dunkin' Donuts, they have a choice of either violating the law and riding on the wrong side of the street or crossing Route Six there. There are a multitude of ways to have a bicycle trail that is a safe one. I also want to point out that the Bicycle and Walkways Committee that we currently have is charged with coming up with a safe bicycle route to Provincetown. They are all enthusiastic advocates of bicycling. We simply want the state, with the help of our Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, and Conservation Commission, to reconsider this plan and develop a better one, which is what this town deserves, just as other towns have. They are trying to do this for Wellfleet in the cheapest way and in the most dangerous way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Further debate? Mr. Oliver.
Thank you. The Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, known as DCR, is planning to extend the bike trail across the Countess Hollow, down the old railroad bed, and connect it directly to Route Six across from the Ghost Bike. It will also build a thirty-three-car parking lot at this point across from the Ghost Bike, not only funneling bikers, pedestrians, and motorists to the most congested and accident-prone section of Route Six in Wellfleet, but encouraging them to do so. From this juncture with Route Six, they will fully, they fully intend to build a two-way bike lane on the ocean side of Route Six to the lights at the Main Street intersection. Due to the many curb cuts and the speed of Route Six, this idea will be disastrous. With people trying to drive in and out of all the businesses in Kahoon Hollow Road while having to look in both directions for bicyclists traveling at different speeds, this plan by DCR demonstrates an astonishing disregard for human life. This plan far exceeds, in a negative way, federal and state safety guidelines. Also very troubling with this plan is that once bikers and pedestrians are across the Route Six Main Street intersection, there will be no accommodation for them from this point until Long Pond Road. This is where our current sidewalks start and end. DCR is leaving it up to the town to figure this out. This is not a section of road to be encouraging pedestrians and cyclists to use. Stopping DCR's extension of the, of the trail at Old County Road would allow us to find a different route. One idea would be to head down the power lines, go across Kahoon Hollow Road, cross Long Pond Road, and over Gross Hill Road. At this point, the trail could go down Old Kings Highway, which is a town-owned dirt road which parallels the power lines, but most importantly, it already traverses the Herring Creek. No bridge needed. From here, Old Kings Highway crosses Black Pond Road and heads straight for Collins Road in Trow. Another feature about this route is that bikers could be directed into town using the Long Pond Road Bridge, avoiding any interaction with Route Six. Obviously, there'll be challenges to this or any route, but this should not deter us. We deserve much, much better than what DCR is proposing. A multi-use trail should not be built adjacent to a highway. No one is going to push a baby carriage or walk their dog on a lane next to the highway, and this will not be a good environment for our less experienced bicyclists, young or old. With the purchase of Payne's Campground, the state is absolutely determined to build a bike trail to Provincetown. In a recent email dated April eighth to our Bike and Walkways Committee, DCR stated they have no interest in an alternative route and want to reverse the select board recommendation of February twenty-sixth, which was to put bike lanes on either side of Route Six because they have every intention of installing their two-way bike path on the ocean side of Route Six, and they, the DCR, will not succumb to what they call a butter's safety concerns. If we don't stop DCR's extension at Old County Road, they will build this extremely hazardous path on Route Six. We will not solve anything talking to DOT. DCR is the problem, and we should not allow DCR to impose its will on us, especially when we know how dangerous their plan is for the general public. DCR is taking the quickest, easiest way out, and Wellfleet, that's all of us, will have to deal with the consequences. DCR may own the railroad bed, they do not own Wellfleet. Instead, we could have a beautiful, unique, and efficient trail that all of us could use, whether walking, rollerblading, biking, et cetera. Lastly, eighty percent of the funding for these trails is federal, twenty percent is state. Municipalities are often asked for design fees, but there are grants to cover these costs, so there should be no monetary expenditure for Wellfleet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Further debate? Mr. Donovan?
Very quick comment. All of the signers of the petitioned article are not abutters, but they, like everyone in here, is a user of Route Six. This plan isn't safe for motorists either.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Ms. Hay.
Hi, my name's Elspeth Hay. Some people may recognize me. I ride a bike with my kids on the back a lot of the time. I'm very much in favor of safe bikeways and in favor of having a place to bike, and I was on the Bike and Walkways Committee for a little while, and there was a group of vocal abutters who would come to the meetings. It was very discouraging, but those abutters were not, they were not in this area. So, those are not the people that are being described. I, I don't think that's true, I guess is what I'm saying. It's not safe to put it right on Route Six, and the people who were against it were back further on Kahoon Hollow Road and other areas where it was actually much safer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. Further debate? Ms. Wilson?
This is a safety issue. The select board did, I think, a very good job giving direction to the consultants, the contractors, Stand Tech, who came to us with the plan. We said, "No." We said, "We don't want this," and we sent them back. And from what I gather from Mr. Oliver, that didn't work, and I think we need to send a more formal, a more potent message to the state, to the Department of Recreation, and to the DOT, saying, "This proposal is not safe. We want a bike path, but what you're saying we have to swallow is not safe, and we should vote to support this petitioned article," I think, to send a really potent message.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Mr. Kumbler?
You know, I like, I want peace, I want justice, I want peace in the Middle East, I want racial equality, I want all those wonderful things, just like the supporters of the alternative bike path want the most beautiful, wonderful bike path. But the real world, the one we live in, doesn't have peace in the Middle East, doesn't have racial equality, doesn't have, you know, social justice, but we struggle with it. This plan isn't, that the, that the state has put forward is not a great plan, but it's the only real plan. When the Cape Cod Commission studied this, they came up with lots of alternatives, and in the end, they said, "Most of those other alternatives are not feasible. They won't happen." The most feasible option is to extend the bike path up and put a, a parking lot at the end of the bike path. You have this image of bicyclists like pouring out onto Route Six and having no idea what's happening. They're coming into a parking lot, the way the present bike path empties them, not into Route Six, but into a parking lot. The fact of the matter is, when I, when, when I was on the bike path, the town of Trow said, "We want to extend the bike path down Route Six," and we said, "We don't want the bike path running through all the town from Trow down to the La Count Hollow on Route Six. We want to extend the bike path." For several years, we pushed the state to extend the bike path. The state has finally come to the position where they want to extend the bike path, and now we're the town of Wellfleet, and the new bike committee is saying, "We don't want that. We think there's a better plan." There is a better plan, but it's not going to happen. There is social justice somewhere in the world, but it's not going to happen in my lifetime. And this bike path that they, this shimmera that they put out to you, the better bike path, that's just not going to happen. This is your choice. No bike path or the one that's problematic, but it's at least a bike path. I say, "We're better off with something that's problematic, but at least is a bike path than no bike path at all," because no bike path is not going to mean there'll be no bikes.
Will the meeting will please give Mr. Kumbler your attention? Thank you, Mr. Kumbler. Mr. Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There's several single-family homes and one or two condos on the initial part going from the Count Hollow Road, several hundred yards up. Those are four vehicles of the property. Otherwise, the properties are landlocked, and this was granted to them by Clarence Smith decades upon decades ago, long before it was sold a couple of years ago. Somebody, including the state, is going to have to deal with all these easements and the vehicle traffic generated by the single-family homes and the condominiums. It's, you can't start there without changing the easements. So, this needs to be put off until something or somebody fixes the easements or allows a vehicular easement on the side of the bike track path. That's what's got to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Yeah, Ms. Reinhardt?
So, I said this the other night in the forum, that there are continuing talks with the DCR and the DOT. I would like to see the Bike Ways Committee's email from the DCR because they usually copy us on everything, and they didn't. So, it sounds unusual to me that they would just say, "This is what we're doing, and too bad." But anyhow, we, I think the Board of Selectmen and at our, the meeting we had with the DCR a number of months ago, nothing was really finalized, but we're working together to get the right solutions. So, I don't really think, I mean, you know, you can petition it to, we're, we're going to work on it anyhow. We are, you know, this is what we do. We hear your opinions, and we get ideas, and then we move on with the good ideas.
Okay, Mr. Oliver. Thank you, Ms. Reinhardt. Mr. Oliver?
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm on the bike committee, and the plan put forward by DCR is, is really inferior. We can do better. I mean, I, I don't think we, we, we can just say, "We can't do better." We can do better. And all we're really asking for with this petition is time to figure out a better route. We already have some really good ideas, and I think it would be, well, first of all, the, the DCR plan is so unsafe, as we've been trying to point out, and we can make a safe, beautiful, attractive bike path. And all we're really asking for in this petition is to tell DCR, "Okay, it's great to go as far as Old County Road. The old railroad bed from La Count Hollow to Old County Road will be great. From that point on, it gets bad." And that's where we want to just give ourselves some time so we can figure out a better route, and I'm sure we can do that. So, please vote for this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Mr. Tash?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is not just an awful plan, this is a dangerous plan. If you, in your mind's eye, think about that section of Route Six from where the Ghost Bike is, on the opposite side of the road, up to where the pharmacy is, I can tell you, that may be the most dangerous stretch of Route Six anywhere.
It already is.
And this is where they want to put a two-way on one side of the road of bicycles, all of these cuts. This is just a, a crisis-
This is just a crisis waiting to happen, and I want to add to this. They want to do this one year before they want to go and put in a new traffic light at the Main Street intersection, and this is the same state that came back to us with a roundabout suggestion. This is just an awful, dangerous solution. Everyone is in favor of a bike path. Everyone wants a bike path that's going to go out to Payne's campground, and it's going to go out to Old County, but going out to Route 6 in particular, at that section, is just inviting a tragedy. Please vote not to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Tash. Are you ready for the question, sir? Mr., I'm sorry, I forgot your last name. I know it's David.
Holmstrom. David Holmstrom.
David Holmstrom. Mr. Holmstrom.
I'm against this. I've walked that section. I've been a biker all my life. I hate having to get up at, you know, get off at La Count Hollow and ride into town along Route 6. It would be wonderful to have this bike ride, to have the path extended. I think people are missing the big picture here, which is that our goal is to have a bike path all the way from the bridge to Province Town, and, you know, we can't let it be road-blocked in the middle of Wellfleet. The people in favor of this have raised two things. One is that there's a better possible route. That's what I thought, too, when I walked that section. I said, "Boy, it should go up the power lines." When I investigated this, it seemed that that is impossible. First of all, the grade is too great. Second of all, it's all sand. Third of all, you'd need to negotiate with Eversource and with the seashore in order to get it done. It's just not going to happen. On top of which, it would cost a lot of money. People said that they're trying to do this the cheap way. Well, they are, because they already own the land, it's shovel-ready, there is funds for it, let's do it. The second issue is the safety along Route 6. I know people, I think people are having a little failure of imagination here. I think it can be, I think there are ways to do it. There are places on the bike path that have similar, crossing cuts, crossing busy roads, you know, Brackett Road, Main Street in Orleens. There are ways to do this, and it has been done safely. My idea, basically, would be to eliminate most of those coast, the cuts, and make it something like the Ace Hardware on, in Wellfleet, where you can have one entrance and exit that would serve a number of stores. I think that could get it down to a manageable number there. And also remember that we're going to go down from two lanes from that part to only one lane, so in addition to having a 30-foot space where you can put a 10-foot line, you could have a turn lane to go into the driveways. I mean, look, I'm not a traffic engineer. I'm just looking at this. I think there are ways to do it, and I think we should negotiate with DOT or DCR about how to do that, but let's not stop this. I'm just going to say one more thing. If you stop it at Old County Road, which is not an unreasonable place to put a parking lot, then people have to go up on County Road and down La Count Hollow Road. If I'm not mistaken, the Bike Commission asked to put a bike path on that years ago, and were turned down by neighbors for NIMBY reasons, so that's not going to be that safe either.
Thank you, sir. Are you ready for the question? Yes.
All right.
Okay. Yes, I think we're ready for the question. Well, okay, one or two more, please. Ms. Butts was first. Yes, Ms. Butts, briefly, please.
Okay. I would like to speak as an abutter for Bay Sales Marine. No one's really spoken about the businesses in that area, and this was a letter that I wrote to Paul Janicki, who is the DCR director, or Janich, whatever it is. I signed it, Jack Ferrera from Jack's Boat Rental signed it, and Donnie Reeves from PJ's signed it. And basically, what it said was, "The businesses in this area are long-established businesses. Bay Sales has been at this location for 48 years. PJ's Restaurant even longer. Cumberland Farms is building a larger store and putting in gas pumps. These businesses employ local people whenever possible and contribute to the local economy. To the best of my knowledge, no attempt was made by the state to speak to these businesses, even though the proposed bike trail will have a significant effect on their ability to do business. The effect on Bay Sales Marine will it be to increase the difficulty we already face moving boats and trailers in and out of our yard during peak summer season. The proposed bike trail will make it harder for mail," excuse me, I'm not used to speaking in large groups, "mail, UPS, and FedEx deliveries. It will make it harder for suppliers to drop off goods. Let's also consider the bikers. Aside from riding on a dangerous section of Route 6, they will often have to stop at curb cuts to allow cars, boats, to enter and exit. This is stop-start riding at best. This is not what you expect from a bike trail on Cape Cod. So what is the solution? The Select Board voted to reduce a two-way bike trail on the ocean side of Route 6 to a one-lane trail on either side of Route 6. This is better, but the best is to avoid Route 6 completely, because it is not certain, as we've heard, that DCR is going to give up the two-way trail. So I ask you, please, take the time to consider other routes, which, while they may cost more, will ultimately serve both cyclists and Route 6 businesses better. When I think of the term "bike trail," the adjectives scenic and safe pop into my mind. The proposed trail from Ansler Real Estate to the traffic light into Wellfleet is neither scenic nor safe."
Thank you, Ms. Butts. Yes, last speaker, if you would, please.
Hi, my name is Lisa Palladino. I am the chair of the Bike and Walkways Committee currently. I actually have a hard copy of the email that I received from DCR. I think I might, it might be beneficial to read a small portion of it.
If you can do so very briefly, please, Ms. Palladino.
I can do it quickly. This was, I had asked them if they had a further plan to share with the town. He said they don't currently, but he will share that we are continuing with the permitting and design of our project, and while we are always adjusting the design to make sure that it fits the community's needs and provides public safety, we are not particularly swayed by the abutters' arguments that it is an unsafe project, or that it should be put on hold until further planning. I can also restate that the proposal to use the private properties until the transmission easement north of Old Hinks Highway is a non-starter for us. We did hear that the Select Board asked Mastot to reconsider a shared-use side path along Route 6 from our trailhead to the Main Street section. We believe that this will create a much less safe situation along Route 6 than could be achieved by a side path, and so we're certainly hoping that this recommendation is reconsidered in the name of safety. And I can make this copy available to the Select Board if that's helpful.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Palladino. Are you ready for the vote?
Ready.
Okay, the motion before you was the motion made by Mr. Donovan, that Article 45, the petitioned, I'm sorry, Article 44, regarding the bike trail extension, as printed in the warrant under Article 44. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The motion carries on a voice vote. Article 46, may I have a motion, please? I'm sorry, Article 45, may I have a motion, please? Mr. Elkin. Yes, folks, if you could, please try to stay. We have a little bit more business to do. We should be able to wrap up by 10 o'clock, if, not earlier. Mr. Elkin?
I move that Article 46 be indefinitely postponed.
Forty-five?
Forty-five, I'm sorry. I'm trying to be efficient. Forty-five be indefinitely postponed. May I say?
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that Article 45 be indefinitely postponed. Mr. Elkin?
If I may speak to it, I'd like to thank the Select Board for approving the recommendation that this article called for, asking them to change the charge of the Energy Committee, and it's in the warrant, if you care to look at it, but I would like to appeal, part of the motion was to increase the size of the committee by two people, and if there's anybody interested in conservation and climate action, please contact me or the board, because we can use some help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elkin. Further debate on the motion for indefinite postponement. If not, all those in favor of indefinitely postponing Article 45, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion for indefinite postponement carries on a unanimous voice vote. Article 46, may I have a motion, please? Yes.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Christine Shreves from the Recycling Committee. I move that Article 46, the recommendation to the Select Board to adopt a municipal plastic bottle reduction policy, be approved as printed in the warrant with the following addition. After the second sentence in the second paragraph, ending with the words "town, commonwealth, or United States," add the sentence, "This Select Board policy excludes all town departments when engaged in public safety operations."
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 46, the recommendation to the Select Board to adopt a municipal plastic bottle reduction policy, be approved as printed in the warrant with the following addition. After the second sentence in the second paragraph, ending with the words "town, commonwealth, or United States," add the sentence, "This Select Board policy excludes all town departments when engaged in public safety operations." Debate on the motion. Ms. Shreves.
Yeah, we have a very brief, brief slides. We are one of nine Cape towns that are voting on this municipal plastic bottle ban this spring. We had early support from the Health Conservation Agent, the Recreation Department, and the Select Board. Next slide. Here are some reasons to reduce plastic pollution, if you need them. We all know it harms human health and the environment. Next slide.
Yes, I'm sorry. Could you, Ms. Shreves, could you speak a little closer to the microphone? Don't be afraid of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next slide. I think, one before, please. We'd like to model the changes that are needed to reduce plastic pollution. That's why we're asking for a municipal ban as a beginning point. Next slide. There are many alternatives to plastic bottles and containers. The Water Commissioner Chair was touting the purity and cleanness contamination-free Wellfleet water. We would like people to reuse more. We have town buildings with water refill stations, and we're adding outdoor refill stations as well. As the Town Commissioner mentioned, or Water Commissioner, the town water scored at the top of the list of public water systems in Cape Cod. We'd also like to mention that the COA, which has had a refill station or refill bubbler inside for a few months, has over 3,000 refills since it was installed. Next slide. There is an existing exemption that the policy does not apply during a declaration of an emergency adversely affecting water quality, and we would like to note that this policy does not apply to individuals or commercial businesses on town property. Let's lead by example. Please vote yes on Article 46. Thank you.
I thank you, Ms. Shreves. Further debate on the motion, Ms. Reinhardt?
Got that. So I think this is a great idea, and again, will benefit Wellfleet, it will benefit every place on earth, and I think we should all just vote on it now.
I think we have, there are a couple of young folks who've been asked to speak on this. I'd like to give them that opportunity. Mr. Wolf? Ms. Shreves? I'm sorry, you're...
I'm terribly sorry. I have a short memory span. I forgot to introduce, or first ask, the moderator for permission to have two middle school students who are Wellfleet residents address the town committee.
You have my permission. Would you introduce them, please? Speak right into the mic, if you will, please, and can we have your names?
Hello, my name is Alia Vasquez.
Can you turn the mic down so it's a little closer to you, please? Thank you.
My name is Alia Vasquez.
My name is Maya Braga de Lima.
I'm offering moral support.
We are here today to talk about a huge problem: plastic pollution.
Plastic pollution affects so much, including our oceans, our animals, and even our health.
Reducing and eventually eliminating the use of single-use plastic water bottles is a start towards a better planet and environment.
The plastic bottle itself contains tons of chemicals that can leach into the water you drink.
Did you know that 93% of all bottled water contains some sort of microplastic that is harmful to our health?
Yes.
Plastic is also costly compared to tap or town water. One gallon of bottled water costs approximately 2,000 times more than one gallon of tap water.
This change can be made in a small area like Wellfleet. You may think that just because we are such a small part of the planet that we can't make a difference.
I can tell you without a doubt in my mind that we can make a huge impact.
Plastic pollution is a huge problem that we, as humans, have created, so it is our job to fix our problem.
Our future and the future of our planet is relying on all of us to put a stop to plastic pollution for a better tomorrow.
Thank you for listening to what we have to say.
Thank you, and I encourage you, too, to continue your participation in government. Thank you very much. Mr. Wolf?
I fully agree with this article. I just have a question as to why the addition of this policy excludes all town departments when engaged in public safety operations. If the object is to do our part to eliminate plastic pollution, why are we making exceptions?
Is there something? Yes, Ms. Bacon? If you can answer that, please.
This article is not just in Wellfleet, this Spring Town Meeting, it's in many towns on the Cape, and it's been discussed...
Just a moment. Are you able to answer Mr. Wolf's question as to why it's...
It's been discussed among fire departments and police departments and emergency personnel that rely on bottled water when they're on a job or fighting a fire, so that's why that was amended this way.
Thank you, Ms. Bacon. Ms. Shreves?
Yes, I would just like to add that there wasn't time between our decision to propose this amendment, this article, and resolving all the concerns or impacts on town departments. We worked with the Recreation Department to resolve their concerns about Race Day and Summer Camp. In the case of the fire or police departments, we believe that we can meet their need for sanitary, sealed, disposable receptacles by purchasing canned water. There's now flat water in aluminum cans, which are readily recyclable. We, this is to be adopted as a Select Board policy, and when we have mitigations and alternatives for those town departments, then we can go back to the town and ask for an amendment to the policy.
Thank you, Ms. Shreves. Are you ready for the vote?
Yes.
The motion before you is the motion made by Ms. Shreves, that Article 46, the recommendation to the Select Board to adopt a municipal plastic bottle reduction policy be approved as printed in the warrant with the following addition. After the second sentence in the second paragraph, ending with the words "town, commonwealth, or United States," add the sentence, "The Select Board policy excludes all town departments when engaged in public safety operations." All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? A motion carries on a unanimous voice vote. Articles 40, excuse me, just a moment.
Forty-nine?
Articles 47, 48, 49, and 50 is suggested be adopted as a consent calendar. May I have a motion, please? Ms. Wilson?
I move that Articles 47 through 50 inclusive be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant. I'd like to read them, it won't take a minute. Article 47, disposal of personal property. Article 48, authorize town collector to use all means for collecting taxes. Article 49, DEP liability. And Article 50, local contributions to the Nauset Regional School.
Is there a second? Without objection, it's been moved that Articles 47 through 50 inclusive be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant. Seeing no objection, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries by a unanimous voice vote. Article 50... Article fifty-one, may I have a motion, please?
Mr. Moderator, this is a standard closing article to hear reports. I move that Article fifty-one be accepted as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any reports to be made? Just for those of you not aware, the town, the annual town report is available now. It's in the town hall, I believe the library probably has copies, the other municipal buildings as well. Do we have any here tonight as well?
There were some out yesterday.
There are, there are some out in the, in the lobby as well. Any debate? All those in favor of Article fifty, the motion made under Article fifty-one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries on a unanimous voice vote. Article fifty-two, may I have a motion, please? Mr. Hauck?
I move Article fifty-two, if there are any other business that may legally come before the town meeting, say it now. If not, let's go home.
We do have, Mr. Hauck, there is some more business to be, to be conducted. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Article fifty-two be accepted as printed in the warrant. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a unanimous voice vote. The additional business to come before the meeting are the moderators' appointments. Got them here somewhere.
Oh, yeah, who, who wins the?
Yes, at the end of the meeting, I, there are several appointments for which the moderator is responsible. Under the Annual Town Meeting of April 24, 2000, Article 27, a Social and Human Services Advisory Committee of five members was created. Ms. Suzanne Thomas is reappointed ex officio to a three-year term through the 2022 Annual Town Meeting with thanks. Under the same Annual Town Meeting, April of 2000, Article 28, created a Bylaw Committee of three members. Ms. Dawn Rickman is reappointed to a three-year term through the 2022 Annual Town Meeting with thanks. The charter gives the moderator the responsibility for the Regional Vocational Technical School Committee of two members. Both of those members, neither of them have a term that's ending at this town meeting. The last bit of business is that, under our charter, Section 7-1-1 and 7-1-3, the moderators' appointments to the Town Finance Committee are subject to the approval of the town meeting. I am reappointing Ms. Linda Pellegrino to a three-year term through the 2022 Annual Town Meeting. All those in favor of the appointment of Ms. Pellegrino indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Pellegrino is reappointed. I am reappointing Mr. Jeff Tash to a three-year term through the 2022 Annual Town Meeting. All those in favor of the appointment of Mr. Tash indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. Tash is reappointed. I am reappointing Ms. Kathleen Granland to a three-year term through the 2022 Annual Town Meeting. All those in favor of the appointment of Ms. Granland indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Granland is appointed to another three-year term. Thank you all for that. We now come to the drawing for five beach stickers. We'll do this. Okay, the total count, just for, for your knowledge, we had 284 folks in attendance tonight, which is 100 over the charter. I thank you very much for helping us get, get this. We had, I think it was 379 last night. So, this is a random number generator, as I said, past years, there is an app for that. And if you look at the number on your card, the winner of the, we have five of these to give away, thanks to the Board of Selectmen and the Beach Administrator. The number on your card is what will go by. The winner, each winner will receive one 2019 combination beach and dump sticker. Neither the winning certificate nor the sticker is transferable. You have to present the certificate when you get your sticker. There will be no refunds if you've already paid for it, sorry about that. And if those five folks who win, if you would come after me, up to me afterward, I'll, I'll give you that, that certificate. So, of course, the phone went to sleep. I think, I think we're all ready for that. Okay. First number is forty-nine. Number forty-nine here? Yes, okay. Is that Mr. Hay, I believe? Next number is eighty-eight. Number eighty-eight? Does anybody have number eighty-eight?
Yeah.
Is that Mr. Cunningham? Mr. Cunningham, good evening. Next number is two-five-seven, number two-fifty-seven. Number two-fifty-seven here? That's what happens when you leave early. Number one-sixty. Number one, I can't, who is that?
Deborah.
Deborah, okay, congratulations. Was that three, I think? Number two-sixty-one. Number two-sixty-one?
Tom Cole.
Right. Tom Cole, congratulations. And last one, number one-three-two. Number one-three-two, Mr.? Yes, sir. I will entertain a motion to dissolve the Annual Town Meeting. It's been moved, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to dissolve the 2019 Annual Town Meeting. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion to dissolve the meeting carries on a voice vote. Thank you all very much for your patience.